I'm Hamblin.
I just want to make sure I said it right when I say it.
Of course, of course, thank you for doing that.
Yes, of course. Yes, well. Yes, sir, of course.
I'm not even going to come.
Good, Don brought it up right up.
Oh, okay.
Two Power Plays over there, the one that says final. Yeah, all right, just making sure. Okay, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Morning.
How are you today?
I'm good, made it in.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here safely. Morning, Mike.
Morning.
Tom? Doing well? Hi, Denise Sherman, how are you?
I'm doing good, how about yourself?
Awesome, thank you for being here today. Thank you for being here today.
You too.
Did you think about rescheduling this thing? I mean, did you think about rescheduling? This is a pretty tough day to travel.
No, I told Don to get up and drive me down.
Well, good for you.
Hi, how are you? Now, if I had to drive, that might have been a good story. No snow, no rain, or ice.
Morning to people. Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, this is you.
Good, how are you?
We're in the intro, stand by for countdown.
I'm sorry, I was only being very careful. And outside the email, the thing like, who's good? Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
Thanks for your grace and patience.
No, go ahead, no problem.
How you doing today? Brent, right? Good to see you, Brent.
Good to see you.
School's not in session today, so you give you an opportunity, right? Is anybody here? They're all here. Well, I haven't seen Pete yet, but he's here.
Pete's on the road.
Pete's on the road.
Thirty seconds out. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, welcome to the Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022 Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, Director of Communications. Commissioners, as we have been the last few weeks, we would like to first start off with COVID-19 vaccine information. This latest information, we actually put out a press release yesterday stating, beginning Monday, February 7th, which is next Monday, the Cedric County Health Department will reduce the hours of operation at the community vaccine clinic. That address is 223 South Main, this is the old Wichita Library. New hours of operation will be from 11:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Monday through Wednesday, and Friday at 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. Some people may be asking what the change is for. Commissioners, just to let you know, the Health Department continues to meet folks where they are in their communities, so we're doing a lot of mobile vaccine clinics, so that's the reason for that change. People are actually going to these mobile clinics and not having to go all the way downtown to the old library. So that's the reason for that change. Also, Commissioner, there was some negative information that went out, misinformation that went out over the last couple of days. Testing is still available at East Harry and Waterman, which is the Wichita Transit Center. So I just want to let people know, there was some information that went out that it was not available, however, it still is. Commissioners, today, yesterday, actually, we kicked off Black History Month, and as you know, this is a celebration of the achievements of African-Americans and a time for recognizing their essential role in the U.S. history. Also known as African-American History Month, the event grew out of a Negro History Week, the brainchild of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans. Each year, we recognize African-American History Month for the month of February. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, under appointments, you've got an appointment to appoint Amanda King Gray, excuse me, to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board as the Education Representative. Under new business, you will have an update from Ms. Denise Sherman from the African-American Museum. Item D is a resolution authorizing and providing for the construction of renovations and improvements to certain public buildings. Item E, a resolution declaring it necessary to build or repair existing bridges. Item F is an update from Lindsey Po Rousseau, our CFO, on the COVID-19 fiscal response. Item G, reported the boards and bids and contracts. With that, Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Well, thank you, Akeem, I appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience today and all those that are joining us on KPTS and online. I appreciate everyone being able to get in. I know it was a difficult drive. As a matter of fact, you'll see that Commissioner Meitzner is not in his chair at this time. He called me this morning, he had a three-foot drift in front of his driveway that he had to shovel out first. When he called me from K-96, four cars had already slid off the road in front of him. So he's being very careful coming in. He will join us as soon as he's able to arrive, so I just wanted to let you know that he is coming. Again, I'd like to now call the meeting to order for February the 2nd, 2020. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invocation to be led by Minister W.E. Hamblin Emporia Church of Christ. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let's pray together. Our holy Father, we thank you for a new morning in our lives and for the opportunity to live in it and hopefully to serve you and honor you in what we do. Thank you this morning for the moisture that the snow brings, for the crops, for the farmers and the animals and benefiting us all. Help us, Father, to appreciate that we have a warm place to be, and we ask your blessings on those who may not have shelter for you to provide and through fellow human beings may they be provided and given warmth and safety. Our Father, we appreciate the freedoms that we enjoy in our country. They are manifest today as the commission meets to decide on various things on this agenda. We thank you for people like themselves who are willing to serve others, and today we ask you to give them wisdom in each decision that is made and that it will always be to the end, that your will may be done on earth as it is in heaven, and that each thing may be to the greatest advantage to the greatest number of people in this county and surrounding areas. Again, we thank you for the privilege of assembly and of speech and all that goes with being citizens of this country and of this county. Guide us, bless us, care for those who need, bless our families, and keep us free. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, I want to thank you very much for coming in and providing the invocation today. I've been asking our staff to get a pastor back on the agenda again because I think this is a great way for us to start each and every one of our meetings. I know during COVID, we were kind of doing things a little bit differently, but this is a way to get back to normal is to make sure that we start our meetings with invocations. So I appreciate even a difficult day it was today to drive in, I thank you very much. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. We had two folks that came in on the portal, and each of the commissioners had an opportunity to review their comments. In addition, I had, each of the commissioners received an email this morning from an individual that had attached that they couldn't get on the portal, so they sent their email to me and to each of the commissioners and asked to be read. So I'm going to read that at this time. "Commissioners and voters of Cedric County, I submit this request that one, homicide of Cedric Lofton be investigated by an independent authority; two, the juvenile detention facility JDF be investigated regarding its ability to serve safely and their license be considered for revocation by KDHE unless JDF can show policy and practice changes to save lives consistent with DCF policy and state laws; and the county and city hire trained professionals for 911 emergency health drug overdose formlessness related to crisis calls 24/7 instead of involving dispatching untrained WPD or sheriff's deputies." So those were the ones that came in by the email or on our portal. I move that we receive and file those that we received by email and by the portal. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If any, none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
I am here, please note that I finally made it. Sorry, apologize, everybody. Opened up the garage and was drift about three feet high that I had to bail out of. So my apologies, but I am here, I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And the next item are the people that are coming in person. Because of the difficulty in folks arriving today, we have opened up a Zoom portal. Folks had to sign up to that just like they did in person by nine o'clock this morning. As a result, we have three individuals in person that I will call on first, and we have 13 that are signed up to come in by Zoom. Because of the length of time for 16 people to be able to speak, what I ask, first of all, is that each and every individual that is speaking, please don't repeat things that other individuals have already said. And second of all, you'll have three minutes in order to make your comments. So I appreciate it, and we will start with those that are in person. And the first individual is Mary Dean, welcome. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Mary Dean. Good morning, Commissioners. I stand before you concerned about a 17-year-old child who was murdered while in the custody of a system that should have protected him. His name was Cedric Lofton. My heart is heavy with sadness for CJ Lofton and his family, and I'm angry that CJ Lofton had to be subjected to such barbaric actions by JAC officials who saw him not as a child with mental health issues but as someone who was out of control with behavioral problems. I stand here in support of County Commissioner Lacy Cruz's request for an independent audit review of the county system, top to bottom. To quote Commissioner Cruz, "You can't investigate yourself." I am very disappointed in Commissioner Sarah Lopez when announcing the task force, that she stated that there was no need to have an independent outside audit. I beg to differ with you, Commissioner Lopez. You represent a district that needs to see you use all resources and tools needed in their best interest. Why hire an external investigator? The purpose of a neutral outside investigation is to provide independent, objective, insightful, nonpartisan assessment of the stewardship or performance of policy programs and operations in promoting efficiency, effectiveness, and integrity in Cedric County's JAC Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center facility for children. In hindsight, the creation of a joint community task force between the city and county has placed unwarranted burden on the shoulders for them to produce suggestions for changes within the JAC facility. The community task force should not have such a responsibility. Justice for Cedric. Questions? Commissioners, regarding Cedric Lofton's treatment, tragic homicide in JAC, was your facility in compliance with their following licenses, policies, KAR 28-4-357? Is it true that Cedric Lofton had bruises, abrasions, and symptoms of mental health issues? Was Cedric Lofton assessed as a juvenile to make an at-risk for potential suicide? Is it true that according to KSA 38-15-28, subsections A or B, or KSA 38-640, and any amendments thereof, no juvenile shall be admitted who shows evidence of being seriously injured, intoxicated, or physically or mentally impaired until the juveniles examined and approved for admission by a physician licensed to practice in cancers? I sincerely hope, Commissioners, that you see clear that the need to hire an outside auditor is needed. Lastly, Commissioner Jim Howell, on Thursday, January 27, 2021, you went before the lawmakers in Topeka pushing for certain issues. One, to ban the use of prolonged restraints in the prone position by law enforcement officers or correction staff. Two, ban the use of the RAP restraints on juvenile. In layman's terms, it's a potential, a patented safe restraint system designed for law enforcement, medical, military, and private security. Three, require a medical and physical health evaluation of a juvenile in mental or physical duress before booking a juvenile intake at the center. So I concur, Commissioner Howell, I agree with you. Justice for CJ Lofton. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to say, Mary Dean, thank you for being here today. It's obviously a very difficult conversation we have to have in this community, but it's very necessary. I want to ask you a couple quick questions. Number one, do you see that, I didn't know Commissioner Cruz even mentioned on a Facebook post or somewhere I read it, I'm not sure where I read it exactly, but I'm not sure I view the task force and the investigation as a one or the other. Can they not both happen at the same time? Do you agree with that, or do you see there's a conflict?
I see there's a conflict.
There's a conflict?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just articulate my personal opinion, I think there's four things that can happen in parallel. We can make some improvements in our facility. We know some things we have to do, and I think we're already working on some of those things right now. We're going to continue to status those improvements as we move forward. Things like blind camera video, we obviously have some blind spots. Adding audio to those facility videos is very important. Having an AED, we need to talk about security in that facility. There's a number of things we can do that I think are somewhat obvious, and I think we're already working in those directions. Task force, I welcome them. I think they can do a deep dive and look at things that maybe are not obvious. The investigation that Commissioner Cruz is talking about, I think there's several ways we can look at that, and I've talked about this personally. If we hire somebody, I don't think they have authority to look at employment records, training records, witness testimony necessarily. The DOJ might have that authority, frankly, they would have the authority. I'm not sure that they would be interested in this case, they may be, I don't know. But I would just say upfront, I think we did invite the KBI, they had oversight in this investigation. I believe they had access to everything Mark Bennett looked at. We also invited the FBI, which I don't think had an interest in this case on the front end. And then finally, I'll just say this, I think that the Kansas statutes opens up the idea of a citizen grand jury. KSA 22-3001C opens up the process for a citizen grand jury, which is a secretive process, but there are findings, I believe, are binding. So I'm asking for someone to take a look at that as a way for there to be a review or an audit of what has happened thus far. But I would just say this, there's four things. Policy changes, improvements at our facilities, the task force, the investigation, however that is done, and then, of course, legislation. And I talk about legislation because there's a very limited window of opportunity to engage our legislators up in Topeka to get changes done in Kansas law. And I think all four of these things can happen simultaneously and overlapping and parallel efforts. And so as we talk about this, I think if we get strung up on the idea that we're going to do one thing and not the other things, we miss opportunities. And I just want to talk about possibly doing multiple things at the same time. So with that in mind, I want to just encourage you to know, I hear what you're saying, and I believe much of what your testimony is today, I completely concur. But I do want to make sure that we don't miss opportunities by doing one thing and not do the other things that need to happen at the same time. That's my personal opinion, and you're welcome to comment if that's appropriate, Chairman.
I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Howell, but I tend to disagree, and we can agree to disagree and still be civil, but I disagree with the task force and other things because I think it's a burden on the community, the people that are on this task force, to come up with recommendations that are supposed to be incorporated with in the county. So I don't believe that the task force is a useful tool. I think that an independent outside auditor, for me, is best, and I read what they're supposed to do. So, and the DOJ, I agree with you. I think the DOJ need to come up in here to get involved. I agree with you on that.
Hey. Thank you, Ms. Dean, I don't see any other questions.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Lawanda DeShazer. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
All right, good morning, Lawanda DeShazer. And so you pretty much heard what I wanted to say, but I just want to add on a couple of other comments. CJ was about to turn 18 years old. He was about to be reunited with his family. And just imagine to get that phone call that your loved one is in the hospital in, I don't even know how they put it, but I don't know, critical condition or what, but we know that he died. He ultimately was pronounced dead. Now, we don't know if he died in JAC and was pronounced two days later, but that's what the evidence seems to show us, right? And so you're that parent, you're that brother, you get the phone call, your loved one is on life support. We get the big case, we get the press conference, our DA, Mark Bennett, comes out and he goes over his steps, step by step. We were told that, no, no one sat on that young man, no one sat on CJ when he was in JAC. But then we hear police cam video that absolutely says, yes, we sat on him. And so because of the inconsistencies that we are now seeing and hearing after Mark Bennett made his press conference and his statement, it warrants another set of eyes to take a good look at this, to really take that deep dive. I agree with you, Commissioner Howell, we can do more than one thing at one time. So I'm leery that the task force is going to say something different than what we probably already know. We have policies in place, we're finding that the policies probably were not followed. So, you know, that's okay, have your task force. The other concern is the people that you put on the task force, there are not grassroots people on that task force. People that would actually maybe have a relative or a loved one in JAC or in police custody are probably not on that task force, so they can't really talk about things from grassroots perspective. And so that was my biggest concern with that task force, that there are not a lot of grassroots people on there that really would have communications with those type of services. So I think if you add more grassroots people on there, that may make a difference. We have to get DOJ or someone else in. Maybe you guys are the missing factor, maybe we need you all to call DOJ. Maybe we need Cedric County Commissioners, City Council, council people. We need you guys to help with the grassroots efforts and get DOJ here and get FBI here. And we also need to maybe look at the records that Mark Bennett actually said he looked at because if he said no one sat on Cedric, and then we hear the police video, the police cam, and the guy said absolutely that's what they did, there's some discrepancies there. And so the only way to wade through those discrepancies is to have another, to have an independent look, to have a third eye that's not connected, to really connect the dots for us. And so, Commissioner Howell, let's do more than one thing at one time. Lacy, Commissioner Cruz, yes, absolutely, let's get some independent eyes in here. Other Commissioners, I hope you guys get on board with the grassroots movement. It's not even a grassroots movement, it's a movement to get justice for a 17-year-old that died, that was first in Wichita Police custody, and then he was transferred to Cedric County Corrections custody. We can do better, I know we can, and I hope that you all, with the power, help us to make something happen positive out of this, to help CJ Lofton and his family get the justice that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeShazer, I don't see any questions. Next is Pastor Maurice Evans. Welcome. Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Three minutes? Okay, give me two seconds because it was five minutes last time, so they've already spoken about the task force, I'm going to edit that part out. Okay. My name is Pastor Mo. And basically, it's time for war. And my question to the commission is, will you fight alongside the community or against the community? You see, we are love warriors, we are compelled to fight for the ones that we love, especially our children. In Isaiah, Chapter 1, verse 16 and 17, it says, "Wash yourselves, make yourselves clean. Remove the evil of your deeds from before my eyes," says the Lord. Cease to do evil, learn to do good, seek justice. Correct oppression, bring justice to the fatherless and plead the widow's cause. Commissioner Sarah Lopez ran on the premise of being a strong challenger to end the political games. Well, we encourage you to cease doing evil and learn to do good, all of you Commissioners. Commissioner Lopez, you actually threatened a citizen with police violence. Why? Because you didn't like what was being said? You claimed that it was a threat to your children. You presented yourself as being a love warrior, but how much of a threat could it have been to your children? You see, we know exactly where to find you and your children because on the cedriccounty.gov website, under your biography, that you probably wrote, but you're definitely allowed to stay up there, it says in the final paragraph, "Sarah has three children, all baptized at St. Anne's Catholic Church and attend Hayesville's public schools. In her free time, you might find her with her son at her oldest daughter's swim meets. Go Hayesville Piranhas, or on the sideline at her younger daughter's soccer games." Unquote. Come on, start now to ending the games, Commissioner Lopez. And now I'm asking, what if this was your child? I'm asking that to all of you. We need you guys to be losing sleep. You need to be searching every corner to figure out how to get justice for this child. Remember, all of you work for us, we direct you. Irrespective of what your personal opinions on any issue, your job is simply to execute the wishes of the community, period. Commissioner Howell, thank you for your presentation on the rap, we need you to do more. Commissioner Cruz, thank you for standing strong on this issue, we need you to stay strong. Commissioner Lopez, we need you to apologize to Andrew publicly because you were wrong. And stop unfriending and distancing from and shutting down communications with the very community that got you elected and allows you to stay in the seat you are in. All Commissioners, seek justice for Cedric, it's time for war. Either you're going to fight alongside or against the people. Join us, come alongside us, push for an independent investigation, all of you. Correct this oppression. We of the community have filed an official request with the United States Department of Justice. That request has an official record number of 133276RTJ. So you can say you support that, support that, all of you. We demand an outside investigation, support that, all of you. It's not a threat, let me just be very clear, because we've given enough warnings, but right now, I'm giving you a promise, I'm giving you my word, I'm guaranteeing, we of the community will make sure that we get nothing less than full accountability and full justice regarding the death of Cedric Lofton by any means necessary. Commissioners, it's now time for war. The only question is, will you fight alongside of or against the community that employs you?
Thank you, Pastor Mo, Commissioner Lopez.
I'm going to make this perfectly clear, that I will not today, nor will I ever apologize to anyone who uses my son's name in the same sentence talking about children being killed. As a parent, that is my number one role, I'm a commissioner second. Anytime anybody uses my kid's name or comes up here and talks about where my kids go to school with the impact of trying to make me uncomfortable by putting my- to school with the impact of trying to make me uncomfortable by putting my son in that position, an eight-year-old child is completely crossing lines that you don't have a right to even get near. You can come after me all you want, but the moment you bring my child into it is absolutely unacceptable. I am on board to help with this. I have stated publicly, if DOJ gets involved, I would be nothing but supportive. This is not political for me. This is my real life. I've had to be in the same position with my brother who was overdosing in my backyard in front of my children to decide, do I call the police or do I not, knowing what that could mean? I am the only person up here who has experienced racism myself. I am here doing what I can with the authority that I have and the scope that I can to make positive changes going forward. You don't have to agree with the way I'm doing it, but I am here trying to make changes for CJ, because that should never have happened, and we should never allow it to happen again. We don't have to agree on how to go about doing that, but you do not get to bring my children into this.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you please tell us who filed the request for an investigation to the DOJ? Where did that come from, and who initiated that?
Community Empowerment and Resilience Coalition.
Okay, I assume you have a copy of what was filed?
We do.
Can you please send that to me?
I will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Mo. I don't see any other questions.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move to individuals that are on the Zoom meeting. Linda out in the front office is handling the Zoom. Everyone is muted. As I call the name, Linda will unmute that individual, and we will give them three minutes. Please, at the beginning, state your name. And we will begin with Walt Chapel. Walt, can you hear me?
I can, sir. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
I can. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Walt Chapel. I live at 3165 North Quarter in Wichita, Kansas. And it's a pleasure to be with you folks today with these very sad circumstances involving Cedric Lofton. I know each of you are very compassionate people, and I'm not going to try to cause any consternation about your motives or your ideas or anything of that nature, because we all have to pitch in and work together on this issue. And I know you're people of integrity, and I know that will be something that you'll actually follow through on. I, like many others, are very concerned that a task force is fine and should continue forward, but it's not enough. We've got to be able to have our facts come out through subpoenas, through individual conversations and investigations, if you will, of individuals who are actually on the scene. And if the records are redacted, if the task force can't see or can't talk to the people that were at JIAC or on the police force that were arresting Cedric, that doesn't get us anywhere. So we've got to have an independent investigation by an entity, basically probably the Department of Justice, or KBI, FBI, somebody in law enforcement that's able to go ahead and have the authority to go ahead and make those contacts and get the information. The second thing I would like to do is suggest that we have mental health professionals take these calls. This is the third or fourth time that somebody in a mental health crisis in Wichita, in Cedric County, has been killed by police. Rather than having comp care come out, or somebody could actually de-escalate the situation, the individuals such as the Caris Randolph, Karen Jackson, these are two individuals that come to mind that are definitely in need of some mental health help and didn't receive it. So we need to have your help in working with the city council to hire and place those individuals in each of the four bureaus in the Wichita Police Department, and also have them available to take calls when they are coming into the Cedric County deputies. Appreciate very much that you're supportive of those two concepts, independent investigation, and then secondly, the mental health professionals. We hope that you act on those recommendations as soon as possible. Time is of the essence, and we all know that, so please use your authority and your position. Pick up the phone, make sure the connections are made with the city council and with the DOJ, and let's move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chapel. And to begin with, I want to apologize, I've known you for a long time, and I called you Walt to begin with, I should have called you, been more formal, called you Mr. Chapel. So thank you for your comments, Mr. Chapel. I don't see any questions.
Thank you, sir.
The next is JVG. JVG, can you hear me? Okay, it appears that JVG is not on, so we will go to the next individual, is Nikayla Pack. Can you hear me, Ms. Pack?
I can hear you, and that's Nikayla. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name's Nikayla Pack. It feels like an insult having to come here today to needing to advocate in this way, especially during Black History Month. But I want to talk to you today about a public health crisis in our county. Racism and police brutality are public health crisis. Our neighbors to the north, Lawrence and Douglas County, the Lawrence and Douglas County Public Health Board declared racism July of 2020 as a public health crisis. This was in order to drive meaningful change, and I'd like to see Cedric County do the same. We can review the data, we've got the data. A thousand people in the US at the hands of police die. African-Americans are three times more likely. Cedric County has clear health and education disparities. Black children in the top 1% are equally likely to be incarcerated as white boys are in poverty. In 2019, the Cedric County Health Assessment Report, black residents had highest percentage of people living in poverty compared to other races. Over 4,000 calls regarding suicide are coming into Cedric County each year. And this brings me to the homicide of Cedric Lofton. In Austin, Texas, they have a 911 crisis line, and it's expanded access where competent individuals that recognize and appropriately address mental health calls can be dispatched. Why can't we look into something like this? Can we look into a Citizens Review Board for our Juvenile Corrections Division? Policies within JIAC are already beginning to change regarding admissions since this homicide happened. But Cedric should never have been taken to JIAC, and then once in JIAC, he should never have been booked and admitted. So this task force, I hope that it stays fully transparent as others have mentioned, and there's no confidentiality agreements, that it's wholly transparent to the public. Now with some of the things that I've said, you may have noticed, all these things are reactive, things we can do moving forward. But where's the justice for Cedric right now? Bennett's final decision, that report was very concerning, it had many errors. He stated that WPD couldn't get handcuffs on Cedric. The tape, the recording, shows that's a lie. He stated that Cedric was held face down for 30 minutes in the report. The tape shows that was a lie, it was 40, almost 45 minutes. He stated that officers did not apply pressure to his back. Once again, with the video evidence, that's a lie. It may not be in your authority to initiate a neutral investigator, but you can advocate for one. It is what our community deserves, and it's what Cedric deserves. There's commissioners advocating to ban the rap, which isn't under county jurisdiction, but it's the right thing to do. In Aurora, Colorado, Elijah McLean was murdered by the Aurora Police. The DA first declined criminal charges against public personnel. Their city manager in chief requested a global firm with neutrality to review and audit. They began a multiple ongoing investigation, DOJ, FBI, federal civil rights. Three officers ended up being charged by a grand jury for manslaughter because of this independent neutral investigation. I don't want to single anyone out, because I believe you each have a beating heart capable of compassion and doing the right thing. Protect this community and seek justice for Cedric by calling for a neutral investigation and making forward changes, like have already been laid out. Because who is going to want to live in a county, in a city, in a state where there's loopholes for murder for our young people? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
I do just have one comment there. Racism is, has been made a public health crisis across the country. As you stated, there is one area in Kansas, out of the 200 and some areas that have called this a crisis, we have one in Kansas. I would recommend and highly suggest you get involved with the Health and Wellness Coalition, like help kind of move this conversation forward. I went to the American Public Health Association Conference last year, and racism was an enormous conversation that we had, and it's something that we do absolutely need to take seriously and look at how we can make changes proactively to go forward. So I completely agree with where you're coming from. The CDC director said that, you know, confronting the impact of racism is not easy, and that it will take a lot of hard work, but we have to work together. And I, you know, I know that people are very upset with my stance and where I'm at with this, but I do think with this task force, we can start to address some of those things as well. And so I look forward to having those conversations, I look forward to hearing what this task force can bring about, and this is a very good first step in addressing racism as a public health crisis. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Pack. I don't see any other questions. The next speaker is, I hope I pronounced this right, Seobon Collier. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Well, thank you.
My name is Seobon.
And please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Seobon Collier. I believe in our community and that collectively, our comments this morning shall leave a very compelling impression on why it is important to have a neutral investigation conducted by a third party. In addition to the investigation, the 911 department also needs to be viewed as well in an investigation. And as well as, looking into the trends of the outcome of all calls for mental illness should be reviewed. How many result in arrest as opposed to following procedure would be something to consider, which also would require an evaluation of a mental health facility to compare that based on race, age, sex, et cetera. We question if JIAC followed protocol for the inmate intake assessment, as well as, I believe that an independent investigation will reveal if the intake process violates policy by not accepting him into the facility due to his mental state. I question if DCF shared his history with the foster family upon placement. Did they regularly monitor his mental health care needs? How frequently was his caseworker involved in his care? And was that frequency within the policy requirements is another question that I have. Now, being that this is unfortunate, we even have to have this conversation to plead the need to have a third-party investigation, I decided to take it upon myself to, and personally, interview three current DCF employees that are also too afraid to come forward out of fearing retaliation and harassment that they've witnessed when one stands up for what they believe in. I also interviewed foster parents as well that feel the same sentiments. For instance, one person said, "Dealing with mental health in children in state's custody is a national problem that has to be addressed. Kansas issues with black children is a much bigger issue. DCF in Wichita, Kansas, doesn't favor minority children and parents in family court at all. They are not afforded the same grace as white families dealing with DCF." Another, whom is also a foster parent and employee of DCF, stated, "Anything I say in this email, feel free to use, just would prefer to be anonymous. I don't want any backlash. I know DCF can be petty." We had an investigation on something that was done in November of whatever year. DCF decided that the person who investigated it didn't do a good enough job, so came back six months later and reopened it. And the DCF investigator told her children not to associate with a colleague's girls at a public pool because they were from the girl's home. I think the biggest problem when it comes to foster families is they don't give correct or current information. If I remember correctly, on CJ's paperwork, he was listed as white. Could have been another child around the same time, though. The people who decide everything should go to the ones who are in the trenches. We can tell you exactly what is problematic. Another thing is, we need to have drug rehab facilities for children. I do not know how many kids I have had to watch detox from meth. Our home is not a medical one. They might get a spot in a mental hospital, but it's rare. I know if the kid has too much stability, they want them moved. We had a girl for two years, and they talked about moving her due to being with us for so long. This is my personal opinion. In my experience, it seems like after a child turns 16, they stop trying to help, as much with mental issues. We had a child that we found writings from with a date and way that they were going to end their life. Zero help. A 12-year-old who scratched themselves is fast-tracked to the hospital. I know we have had more kids stay longer because of the class action lawsuit, but it also has made moving kids to a facility that is more appropriate for them way more difficult. In the foster care system, all siblings are supposed to see their sibling at least one time a month. It doesn't always happen. We need an emergency mental health facility. Not all crises happen between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. I live in a smaller town, and we have to call the police. They contact the mental health facility. It's a mess. I just heard a story about a child, they were 16, I believe, that was locked in Wichita Heights High School because they were supposed to be picked up by St. Francis due to not having a placement, and St. Francis forgot about them. In a foster child, if a foster child doesn't have placement, they bounce from house to house at night. A lot stay at the office during the day. That's just a small thing. Recently, someone I know had a kid with a history of seizures that wasn't told to anyone. So many allergies not listed. But when it comes to behaviors, you need to be transparent. Thank you for allowing me to tell things that I see is wrong, it does build up after a while, and the people I'm around are like, yeah, just another day, and we all feel powerless. Those are just two that I personally interviewed. Now imagine what would be revealed, how if this investigation was transparent by a third party. I personally believe that every single person that works in DCF that's not afraid to speak up or foster parents interviewed, which I think is necessary. Every single one of them will have some sort of story to show how broken the system is and how it is impacting these children in a very adverse, filthy way, for it to just be left as just another case, or these children being just misplaced, lost, or having a drug addiction that they're trying to detox from a place in a home that isn't prepared or trained to manage those children. This is just examples of what happens in the system. My perspective of liberty is that nobody gets to investigate themselves, especially the government. It is simply not possible to be unbiased when looking at your own or those private companies you directly hire, in the case of DCF, JIAC, and JDF. This investigation needs to analyze every physical incident involving staff and inmates and identify a trend of how often these blind spots is used, just as when Cedric was guided there, when he was placed on the prone position and sat on, which is pretty much three times of the George Floyd incident, the time that it took for him to pass away. So as mentioned previously by Nikayla, in 2021, after the independent audit and investigation to Elijah McLean's death in Aurora, Colorado, the three officers were charged by a grand jury for manslaughter. Again, because I personally feel that this independent audit is definitely what was needed to bring that transparency to life. So I implore you to stand with us in the community, to demand a transparent, neutral investigation, and I am so thankful for Lacy Cruz to stand up. And I am so thankful for Lacey Cruz to stand up and say what she believes in. And I hope that after today, you all change your minds and stand in solidarity. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I demand that we have justice for Cedric Lofton and that this investigation helps to show that you are also in alignment with that belief. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. And I don't see any questions. The next speaker is Scott Litwiler. Scott, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Very good. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much Chairman. My name is Reverend Scott Litwiler. I am an ordained minister with Mennonite Church USA, serving at Lorraine Avenue Mennonite Church here in Wichita. I'm here today to voice my support for an independent investigation. One of the things I get to do with my job is serve on the Board of Directors of a national organization within my denomination called Dove's Nest. We're a child abuse prevention organization. And one of the first things we do when churches call us to ask for advice and consultations about child abuse that has happened within their churches is we recommend an independent investigation. So many churches try to have task forces with internal folks who look through policies and procedures and try to do the best that they can. And yet, personal ties, even just to institutions can create, even among the most wonderful people and well-intentioned people, creates bias. And so we recommend third-party independent investigations so that someone can come in as a neutral party to find the reasons why children are abused in their churches. And a child hasn't just been abused in this situation. A child has been murdered by people who were supposed to protect and help him. And that concerns me greatly. Wichita has a great program, ICT1, with unarmed, trained professionals or first responders. It has saved the city $3 million in a year, just in its budget, and yet hasn't received any more funding. And when I have tried to call ICT1, there was a three-day wait. ICT1 could have saved Cedric's life because they actually knew what they were doing and knew how to, no, they know how to respond to mental health crises. And especially with children. The police lied to Cedric. That is in the report. And they did not send him to a place that could help him with his mental health. Instead, he was abused, assaulted, and eventually murdered. This is just unacceptable in my eyes. And I am so very concerned that we are even debating this. This seems like the floor, in my opinion, this is the bare minimum that we can do to honor Cedric's life and the violent passing that he had. And a way to assure the community that this will never happen again because it is absolutely unacceptable for a child to be killed under the custody of the people who were sent to help him during a mental health crisis. This never, never, never should have happened and should never happen again. So I am urging you all to support an independent investigation so that Cedric can receive some form of justice and this community can be assured that no other children will be murdered under the arms of the people sent to protect and help them. We need an independent investigation. Thank you so much.
Thank you Reverend. I don't see any questions. I appreciate your comments. Next on the sign-up sheet, a little under the shavers, she's already spoken, so we'll move on to the next one, is Robert Johnson. Robert, are you able to hear me? Robert Johnson, are you able to hear me? I see Robert Johnson. Are you, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am here.
Oh, we hear you now.
Okay.
Robert, Mr. Johnson, you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
I am Robert Johnson and I am, I serve as the lead servant of St. Mark United Methodist Church. And I speak today as a member of the clergy, but also representing the African-American clergy in the community. I think I can freely say that I can speak on their behalf. So I just briefly want to say that we would like to see accountability in this case regarding the young man Cedric Lofton. We'd like to see justice done. We want to voice that. Line number two, certainly we would like to see an independent investigation. And I think that's the best way to get to accountability and justice in this situation. We certainly also want to advocate for better mental health, healthcare resources. There are a lot of things happening in African-American community in particular, in minority communities in general, where police are called, where, and in such situations, it would be better to have healthcare resources available. And we're asking law enforcement to handle situations that they are not equipped and prepared to handle. And often that leads to situations of violence or situations of death, such as the case of Cedric Lofton. So we certainly want to push for and advocate a more informed and expansive resource base of mental health resources to help in situations of crisis that happen in our communities. The last thing I want to say is that I really would like to say this, since I've been here in Wichita for five years, moved here five years ago, and since I've been here, I have observed a very positive relationship between the African-American community, the African-American clergy community, and law enforcement. And we would like to continue that. I think in several situations that have happened in my interactions with the other black clergy, they have been very patient. They've been very supportive of law enforcement. They've been very reserved to make any kinds of accusations or to think the worst. And we certainly want to continue that. But in this case, given the coroner's report and giving other information data that's been laid out here today, I think that this is a situation where we, that really needs to be investigated with independent investigation. And if that happens, then I think that that allows us to continue with a positive, a positive community building, empowering, mutually empowering relationship for, between the black community and the city. And I think that's beneficial for all of us. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Well Pastor, thank you very much. I don't see any questions. I know you've been here five years, but I want to personally welcome you to our community. Thank you for speaking today.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Opal Smith. I see a cell phone. Ms. Smith, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can.
I can hear you. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Opal Smith. And this is new for me, but I am, I'm happy, you know, I'm glad that I, to be given the opportunity to voice my opinion on the Cedric Lofton case. And my opinion is that I would like for you all to support an independent investigation of what really happened, you know, to this young man to cause him to lose his life. And also to look into having special dispatchers, you know, that would know how to dispatch to the right organization where there's a mental health crisis going on. And thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Smith. We appreciate your comments. I don't see any questions. The next speaker is Ford Carr, but I don't see a Ford Carr up on the screen. Does anyone know about a Ford Carr?
His internet is actually unstable and keeps kicking him off, so.
Okay, well, if it comes back up, I'll come back to him as soon as we are able to establish his good internet. The next individual then is Courtney Price Dukes. I do see a Courtney. Ms. Dukes, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Courtney Price Dukes and I have the honor and the privilege to serve as Miss Cedric County on the road to Miss Kansas, which is a statewide competition that feeds into the Miss America organization. And as a part of the Miss organization, I have the responsibility to have a social impact initiative. And my social impact initiative is aging out to aging forward, which focuses on providing resources and education for those in the foster care system who do have to age out to make sure that we are creating a future for them that will be safe and healthy. And as someone who was in the foster care system, the case of Cedric Lofton hit hard for me. Also, as someone who dealt with mental illness, I think that it is important that we focus on how his mental illness was not taken into account in this case. I think that as Mr. Chapel stated earlier, it is very crucial that we make sure that we have those health professionals answering the phone and making sure that those that are in the police system are trained and educated on how to deal with those that are induced from trauma and suffer with mental illness. As a black man, as a black man in the foster care system, Cedric was, had no choice but to suffer from mental illness. It just comes with the trauma of this situation, unfortunately. And I think that that should have been a huge factor in how this case was handled. And I believe he should have been taken to a mental health care facility because from my experience, it is totally beneficial when you have someone that knows how to deal with your trauma and you have someone that is informed on that, rather than having someone just completely act on their emotions and their fight or flight response, rather than taking that moment to process what is going on. So it is unfortunate that being put in a system, the foster care system that was supposed to protect him, and then also the police who are also supporting, protecting. He wasn't protected by either that day and that is unfortunate. And because of that, I would like to push for your support for an independent study for the justice of Cedric Lofton's life and his unfortunate death.
Thank you very much, Ms. Price Dukes. I don't see any questions. I appreciate your comments today. The next speaker is Triva Smith. Ms. Smith, are you able to hear me? I don't see a Smith on the screen. I will hold Ms. Smith in case we're able to connect. The next speaker is Jasmine Rogers. Ms. Rogers, you will hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Very good. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jasmine Rogers. I'm a youth leader with Progeny Kansas. And you likely will hear me repeat something that another speaker has already said, but I just feel that it is very important that whether it's the DOJ, whether it's a citizens' jury, there needs to be some sort of outside investigation that will result in criminal charges for those responsible for CJ's death. Because if we do not charge those responsible for murdering him, you will see this happen again. Because if you really believe that this is the first time a young person has been abused inside JIAC, if you think this is the first time there has been a near-death experience inside JDF or a corrections facility, you are wrong. Stuff like this happens inside these facilities every day. And if it goes without punishment, if it goes without a criminal charge, you will see another young person die. Next, as everybody has said, we need to invest in mental health workers. Austin, Texas has a model where mental health workers and social workers are sent to mental health calls, not a police officer. And that diverted 4,000 calls from police officers to these mental health workers the first year it was established. And in the data that Lacey Cruz posted, which I really appreciate, that talks about the suicide calls that we get, the site calls that come in, we could easily divert those calls to mental health workers and to social workers. We can use the ICT car for mental health calls that come in where it may be unsafe. So you still have a social worker and you may have a police officer there in case they are needed. But the ICT car is one of one, as somebody else had already mentioned. So that needs investment of its own, but we need a separate unit that is just mental health care workers. Because even having a police officer there creates that good cop versus bad cop scenario. So you have a mental health worker here, but if you don't comply, you're going to be faced with a police officer who has a similar outcome for every mental health call. So I think it's really important that you all look into what the Austin, Texas Police Department and what their county has done. I'd be happy to forward the information that I have for that. And lastly, what I want to say about the task force versus charges is I don't think it should be either or. I do think we need both. I think if you do not charge those responsible, you will see this happen again. And I am the only young person who was appointed to that task force. So now, I feel like I have to use my lived experience, day in and day out, on that task force if I want to see any kind of real policy changes, which I will be doing because Progeny and the work that I do with Progeny has been advocating for closing these facilities and investing in alternatives for years now, since the Larnard Youth Prison was closed. Our reports are out there. The data from Kansas Appleseed is out there. There are better options than facilities like JIAC and JDF. So that is all the comments I have and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you, Ms. Rogers. Commissioner Lopez.
I don't have any questions necessarily, but I do want to thank you for joining and being a part of this task force and bringing everything that you just said into the conversation. I hope that it is known that, you know, we take all of this very seriously and having your voice at that table is going to make this even better than what it could have been originally. So I just want to thank you very much for being a part of this and I look forward to seeing you on Thursday. Thank you Jasmine.
Well, thank you, Ms. Rogers. We appreciate you being here today. I don't see any other questions. Thank you again. And I'm going to back up. Triva Smith, I believe is on line now. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Very good. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes, please.
Okay, my name is Triva Smith and I am a community advocate. I would just like to say, I don't want to be repetitive because a lot of people have said the same thing I was going to say. But I just want to inform you, I have did many rallies, protests for George Floyd that life was taken. And so to see this happen again, actually with his closer to home, what it happened to Cedric Lofton, I want to make an appeal to you guys. We selected you guys, we put our trust in you guys and put you in office. So we're hoping you do right by us. Yes, racism is a factor. Yes, many different offices as far as the police department, JDF, all, everybody is at fault for this young boy losing his life. I just, we need some accountability. If we could go back and look at what was done wrong, we can't bring Cedric Lofton back, but we can make, we can, I know there's policy changes and action and all that, but we can make it right for him to let his family know his death will not go in vain. Also, yes, that was basically it. We just need accountability. I'm asking you. We, again, we put our trust in you. We put you guys in office. So we're hoping you do right by us. So I'm hoping that you will revisit this and go back and reopen the case, get an independent No, the DA that we have selected has not done right by us. And I'm just hoping that justice will be served and I'm hoping that you guys will relook at this situation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Smith. I appreciate it. I don't see any questions for you, but thank you for being here today. Our next speaker is Tracy Mason.
Thank you for having me today. I want to read something real fast. "Then said he unto the disciples, 'It is impossible, but that offense will come; but woe unto him through whom they come.' It were better for him that a millstone were hung about his neck and he cast into the sea than that he offend one of these little ones." The last statement there, offend one of these little ones is what I'm here for. My name is Tracy C. Mason, Sr. I'm a youth advocate for Wichita, Kansas, a grassroots worker for CHD Boxing Club, CHD I'm here basically to just say enough, enough finger point. I've listened to several, several meetings and press conferences and stuff like that. There's a lot of finger pointing going on. The county is pointing at the city, the city is pointing at JIAC, back and forth, everybody's pointing this way and that way. And they're acknowledging that something occurred wrong, something, he should not have been murdered. Homicide, as the county coroner's report says, homicide. With that being said, with homicide being said from the county autopsy report, we have this this stand your ground thing is said. The stand your ground thing only exists for stopping someone from murder, from hurting you. You have the right to stand your ground to them. It does not say that you have the right, after the threat has been ceased and stopped, the threat of your life has stopped, that you have the right to take that life. It does not say stand your ground, and then, once the threat is stopped, you get to kill that person once the threat is stopped. That is what happened to CJ Lofton. Whatever stand your ground you want to stand on, what they saying, what this officer is saying, as the video showed, the threat was stopped, whatever threat he said was justified for him standing his ground. Once CJ Lofton was placed inside of that cubicle, that cell, the door should have been closed and secured, and CJ Lofton should have been left alone. So let's get that stand your ground rule out your way. With that being said, and the contradictions from the, our district attorney throughout the video, throughout the WPD, these videos as well, throughout statements, throughout testimonies, you yourself see those. So with that being said, you yourself should take it upon yourself to seek out someone from the outside, other than Wichita, the WPD, JIAAC investigators, our own very own lying, because he told many lies, as you can see yourself, contradictions, or whatever you want to call them, they were falsehoods. We need an outside independent investigator to look at this, because we need somebody that's not biased to what's going on, that doesn't. For the bottom line is that this young man was murdered, and then stand your ground is being used as a get out of free jail card. That's how I see it. So with that being said, also, this so-called, what do you got, a committee, a meeting, people that's meeting to figure out what to do, well, we already know what to do. You guys, I've been in many of your meetings before, and listened to you guys talk, the city and the county and the state and everybody, everybody is talking about the same thing they've been talking about for years, mental health, how to deal with mental health. And the answer is, do something. The money is there, the people are out there, the people out there that are trained, the professionals are out there in the field, they need work, we need more funding for that, and also, there's grassroots people, there are grassroots workers such as I that can be involved in helping the community out. So you need to, we need to reach out to those grassroots. I don't see anybody on that committee that was formed that is a former, ill-reputed actor such as I, someone that was on the other side of the fence. Someone that, here, I'm going to read something else. "To solve a problem, someone who has solved the problem can help find the solution." I hope you understand that. Someone that has solved the problem, such as me, has solved the problem of how to not live the life of ill-reputed, can help solve the problem of reaching out to those who are ill-reputed in the eyes of the community. We need to reach out to, I'm not alone, there are several, there are Men of Honor groups, Rise Up for Youth groups, there are several, Bryce Graham's, you know, Kendrick, I could give you names on and on and on, but you have to reach out to us as we reach out to you. So with that being said, that's for the future. But right now, enough is enough. We need you to go ahead and do what you, we require of you, because the citizens of Wichita, Kansas is asking you and demanding to you that this is wrong, and you know it's wrong from the reports you have. We're not asking anything difficult. It's been done before. We have the signatures, we have the petition numbers up, and we're just asking you to recognize that the citizens of Wichita, Kansas, of the community, the voters, we're asking you to just act, because something happened here. And per the coronary autopsy report, it was homicide. And you can't stand your ground and commit a homicide after the threat has been stopped. Just think about that. Appreciate your time, appreciate you taking this time and effort, I ask for your effort during this, during this issue we're dealing with. This is a very, listen, listen, y'all, this is making, this is a sad thing and a mad thing, because I should not be here on a Zoom meeting, defending a child's right to have justice. And that's what we're doing right now. This young man was murdered, per the autopsy report, homicide. So let's figure it out, let's do the right thing, and I appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. We appreciate it.
Commissioner, I'm going to leave, because I see right now that this is not being taken seriously, especially when you're
Thank you, everybody. You don't have the, you don't have the, you don't have the floor right now, ma'am.
And talking to yourself
You don't have the floor right now, ma'am.
Yes, we need to get attention
You're excused from the audience, ma'am. Thank you.
You're just a senator, because you are not
Ma'am, you do not have the floor.
Not wrong.
Hey, we have one individual that we skipped because we did not have them online. I still do not see them, but I want to make sure that we don't skip anyone. Ford Carr. Is Ford Carr online, or has anyone heard from Ford Carr?
He's not trying to join.
It does not appear. That's our last speaker, then. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just say thank you to all the conferees that testified today. There's a lot of passion, and we've listened for more than an hour, asked a few questions, but I wanted to kind of share some of my thoughts as we wrap up this part of our agenda today. I appreciate Mary Dean, I've known her for a long time. I don't think there's any commissioner that's not taking this seriously. I think we are all, we're all, we are all focused on this, focused on this issue. We want to, we want to see some solutions put in place. We care deeply about this case, we care deeply about this family. We are, I think everyone is sorrowful that this, that this is before us. I do want to say, I have not followed the conflict between Commissioner Lopez and whoever else is making comments about her family. I don't know the details there, but I would just say that I agree with her. She doesn't deserve to have any threats to her family, and no one deserves to have a threat to their family. I'd like to defend her. She's an elected official, she does the best she can. We might not always, we may not always agree with each other, but I believe that she wants the best in this situation. She's doing the best that she can to advocate, as I am as well. But I would like to show her respect and, and let you know, I don't, I don't think that she, I don't know what happened, I don't know, I don't know what the conflict, but I don't know that an apology is, is necessary or appropriate. I just think that whatever happened there, it sounds like she was, she felt threatened by some comments, and maybe they, maybe they were misunderstood, or maybe they were, you know, maybe weren't the best choice of words, whatever, but I don't think there's anybody that wants to, to cause more conflict through this, through this situation. So let me just defend her there. I don't know if anybody had caught the reason I went to Topeka, but Senate Bill 367, it passed in 2016, I think there's a lot of relevance. One of the people who spoke today was also, I believe, a speaker there on 367. We talked about Hellsville, 2200 in Topeka. There's a number of things we can do as a community, that I think it's time for us to do some juvenile justice reform, some juvenile justice review, the impacts DCF, Cedric Lofton was a foster child. There's a lot of, a lot of issues that deal with the DCF. I know the governor, Laura Kelly, has ordered an investigation. I'm not sure if it's on DCF or by DCF, but regardless, I believe that there were mistakes made by DCF in this case. And I think there's opportunities to, to address that somewhere in this process, that needs to be part of the conversation. I wrote an article last week that I will continue to refer to. I think that a number of people today use the word accountability. I think there's a lot of blame to go around. And one of the speakers said, we don't want to continue pointing fingers at each other, but the reality is, there's a lot of blame to go around. I think we can all say, we all made mistakes. A lot of things were wrong. Our policies probably weren't what they should be. Our training isn't what it should be. Our facility had some, some things that weren't quite the way they should be. I think that not only did DCF make a mistake, I think that the entire foster care system actually needs to be reviewed. It's not just a one case, it's a whole lot of cases. I think WPD, I think I heard over and over again, WPD made a choice to take him to JIAAC when I think everyone seems to agree that that wasn't the right place to take this young man. I'll argue, based on some work by the Wichita Beacon, they talk about the RAP restraints, and how that's new to this community. It's not new in the world, or in America, or even in the state necessarily, but it is new to our community, our Sedgwick County community, it's new here. WPD has chosen to use RAP restraints, and they've used them 83 times in the last 15 months, 10 times on children between ages 13 and 17. This is reported by the Wichita Beacon, if you want to go read the article. I think that's too much. I don't know, we should be using these on children, especially if someone is known to be in mental health crisis. It's not the right strategy to help that person, I think it makes it worse. And what may be good for law enforcement is not necessarily good for the people they're trying to protect and serve. I think there's, there's something we should take away from that. I testified in Topeka, I think that their use should be limited and probably never be used on children at all. That's my personal opinion. Bonita Gooch with the Community Voice reported that 116 times in the last 15 years, we've had people in this country die from being left in a prone position in an extended period of time. I think when you're in the process of handcuffing somebody, perhaps, maybe a prone position is a, is a position you would want to use for a moment, but you need to get them back on their side, or sitting up, or something, so they can breathe. George Floyd is another example, where someone died, he claimed dozens of times, "I can't breathe," and those calls were ignored, which is why those folks that are involved in that case are either in jail or going to jail. We need to have state law, in my opinion, that addresses this more than just county policy. Whether we pass any state laws or not, I think we can do some county policy improvements and training to deal with anybody who's combative, anybody who's having, you know, I think we have to talk about security in our facility. The one thing I can't do, since Sedgwick County has no authority over WPD, I can't, we can't institute a policy that says they can't use RAP devices, RAP restraints, that's their business. So that's why I seek that change at the state level. Everything else that I can think of right now, we have some authority to address these with our own, with our, with our own policies, for the most part. I have some questions. I do want to be clear, though. I don't want to be misrepresented or misunderstood. I do support an outside independent investigation. Let me say it again. I support an outside independent investigation. I want to make sure, however, that whatever that process is, they have access to the right data. The evidence must be available to them. Witness testimony, they have to be able to put people under oath, to ask them questions. If we went out and hired somebody, let's say a law firm in this community, like we did with our EMS organization, they don't have the authority to put someone under oath. So just hiring someone who's a third party doesn't necessarily check this box. They have to have authority, they have to have ability to get to the right documentation and the right evidence, to call witnesses, to review witness testimony, to review all of the evidence, training records, employment records, everything, that must be reviewed. The only people that can do that, as far as I know, probably, you can't talk right now, I'm sorry, the only people who can do that probably is the DOJ. And again, we can't control whether they choose to take this case or not. Making a call to them is fine, but we can't decide whether or not they're going to take this case or not. They may or may not. We can, in this community, potentially seek a citizens' grand jury, which is initiated by the electors of Sedgwick County. They have the ability to call a citizens' grand jury. It may not be satisfied, may not be satisfying to the extent that it's a secret process, once they're, when they're in panel, a 15-member, a 15-member jury, a 15-member jury, their deliberations and investigations and discussion is behind closed doors, but I believe that their conclusions is binding. They can actually cause charges to be filed. So I think, if we're going, and by the way, just to be clear, I did say this earlier when Mary Dean was here, the KBI did have oversight in this, in the investigation. So let's be clear, this wasn't just Sedgwick County investigating our own, our own agency. We had a, another set of eyes that looked at the investigation and was there the entire process. I believe we also invited the FBI, but they didn't want to involve themselves. And so, to the extent we want to have a, a third-party independent investigation, we did have the KBI. They don't, they have no reason to, to protect Sedgwick County. They have, they have every reason to hold us accountable. So when we talk about an independent investigation, I want to make sure that whatever we hone in on, they have authority to do what needs to be done. Otherwise, we're not, we're just wasting our time talking about it. We need someone who has authority, and you can't just hire someone out there and give them that authority. It has to be, has to follow Kansas law. I do have some questions. Again, for me personally, I advocated for the restriction on extended use of prone positioning. I would like to see RAP devices restricted by Kansas law, especially for juveniles. I also talked about mental health. This child was known to be in a mental health crisis, that's why his foster dad made a phone call. I listened to the 911 tape myself. And according to Kansas law, I didn't know this when I testified, but I found out about it, because we have an investigative report that uncovered this truth, but Kansas A592953, didn't know about it, or because someone made a choice not to follow it. I don't know. But I'm disappointed in the fact that we, the very law I was advocating to pass in Topeka last Thursday, actually is already on the books. I'll wrap this up. There's a lot of opportunities here. I think mobile mental health, ICT1, is a discussion we need to have. I don't know that I'm completely happy with ICT1's current format, I think we can do better. We need mobile mental health, however. Perhaps that should be in the private sector, and we should contract out for some services, I don't know. But we need to have a much more robust discussion there. We obviously need to update our policy, and our, when we have people under our care and our training, that needs to happen. I've already mentioned cameras and audio and AED devices that should have been in place. I'd also like to talk about CIT training. How many of these officers that responded to this call had CIT training? I do not know, I do not know. But obviously, you can't respond to a mental health crisis as a police officer and do a really good job understanding what's going on if you don't have that training. So I think it's, it's, it's an opportunity, I have advocated in the past, that people, the law enforcement officers with CIT training should be paid above those without CIT training. I think we need to show that in their salary. We need to incentivize them to do that. I don't, I don't, I've said probably way too much. I want to be clear, though, I do support the independent investigation, it just has to make sense. I've asked for a scope of what they're looking for, what authority do they have, and I'll just wrap this up. One final thing I want to comment here, I want to be very accurate about our words we use. I do know that the autopsy used the word homicide. I am not a lawyer, but I think to go from the word homicide to the word murder is an interpretation that certainly people in the community can make that interpretation, they can make that, that analogy in their own mind. But I, as an elected official, don't want to use that word until someone in the criminal investigative world concludes that a criminal charge of murder is appropriate. I don't know, I can't make that call. But I want to make sure, make sure we're very clear, not to put words in people's mouths, not to, not to misrepresent the facts as we know them. And likewise, I want to go get the transcripts of exactly what the JIAAC person said when they were asked by WPD regarding putting pressure on the back of Cedric Lofton. I heard someone from, I think Bastin Mo, you said the other day, I heard you, two or three people, for 20 or 30 minutes, sat on the back of, I don't think that's what happened. Did they put pressure on it? Please don't, please don't speak. I don't know what pressure they put on him, but I need to have that clarified. I want to see the exact transcript of what was actually asked and what was actually stated. I'm going to look that up myself. But I don't want, I don't want to misrepresent the facts here. I think we need to be very accurate in what we say, and what we repeat, and if we don't, if we don't stay accurate, we're going to make mistakes along the way. We're going to miss, we're going to cause more misunderstandings. So let's all work together to be accurate in what we say. I don't know, with that, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot, there's plenty of comments, but thank you for your time to speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. There's a lot of thoughts that I have, but I just want to be really, really direct in saying that, you know, being in this seat comes with the scrutiny that is very uncomfortable. Being in this seat and representing 100,000-plus people puts us under a microscope that isn't always fun. But at the end of the day, this is not about individual commissioners, this is not about Lacy Cruz, this is not about Lacey Cruz, this is not about Sarah Lopez, this is about a community supporting these commissioners so that we can work together. What's been happening and what happens around the country with women every day is people will try to pit us against each other, and that is what's happening right now. Stop trying to do that, community members. Stop singling people out because it's not helping this body of work work together. That's first. Because all of this is about is a child who died in our custody. A 17-year-old child died in our custody, and that should be our focus. This makes me really sad that we're at this point fighting, but we have to fight, but not with each other. We have to fight to change a system that is wholly broken and has to change so that no one else dies, no child dies, no adult dies, and that people understand we can change this system. One thing I will say, though, is that I am not going to stop pushing, I will not apologize because I am not here to protect the comfort of others. I am here to represent 104,000 people. I make decisions on behalf of 500-plus thousand people, and I want to do what's right for those people. I do wholeheartedly believe that every single commissioner up on this bench cares about this case. We are going about it in a different way, and that is completely okay, but we must support every single aspect of this. So, what I will say is, I think there's a couple of, I'm not going to try to repeat a lot of this stuff, but I do think we can do all of it. We have to start it all in motion now. This task force absolutely is imperative to have these voices to the table. A community group utilizing their strengths with each other, looking for short-term, short-term policy fixes, and as long as they want to work, maybe they'll go on longer term. I do believe that it's important for us to talk about an investigation into how this child died, but I do think, at the end of this, we have to think really big. We are Kansans. There has been a lot of things that have started in Kansas, and why can't we have a system-wide change start in Kansas? Why can't we have a look into the life of this child, into the life of this child from the moment he was born until he died? Why can't we take a good, hard look at where the system failed him? Why can't we do that with 100, 200 other people and find where the system failed them? Why can't we have a systematic approach to fixing all of the coordination of care between social service providers to our justice system? That's what I'm asking for. I don't think it's too much. There have been people around the country, the state of Colorado, in Boston, they have looked at switching to restorative justice practices that really help people instead of punishing them. I do have a couple of questions because, and I want to thank the staff for answering a lot of them, I have been sort of peppering them with questions. But just like I have questions and other commissioners have questions, is there a central place where we could ask these questions so that they could be filtered out so that people know which questions are being asked? I have been asking a ton of questions, so if we could have a database or something put together that if all of these questions are continually asked, obviously, we can filter out the same kinds of questions. But I wonder if there's a way for us to make sure as a community that all of the questions anybody has are put into a place that other folks can see which questions have been asked. A couple of the things that I have specifically asked for is an incident report of all incidents that have happened in JIAK for the past three years. I'd like to know the severity level of those, and when I say that, was someone taken to a medical facility, transported by our EMS professionals? Do we have those reports that we could see how many times an EMS truck transported a child to a medical facility? I'd like to see those incident reports, obviously with names and personal information obviously redacted. But I think that's important to know, how many incidents are happening at this facility? I did ask last Thursday to both County Manager Stoltz and our County Counselor Mike Papoun about the investigation and what our specific authority is within Sedgwick County, because that has been a question that has come up. And so, Mike, I'd like for you to address that in the same regard that we addressed it last Thursday, just so that there's no question about what we could do in regards to an investigation.
Commissioner Cruz, Mike Papoun, County Counselor. Regarding an investigation, again, it's been stated several times today and over the past, but the KBI has looked into this, the sheriff's office has looked into this, the Attorney General, the U.S. Attorney's Office has been, and the FBI have been given notice of this, they have the opportunity to weigh in and do a Department of Justice investigation if they want. Obviously, Citizens Group today made a formal request for that. Other than that, I don't know what we, we don't have any, we're not, we have no control over the district attorney. He looked at this case, he determined criminal charges shouldn't be filed. There's little recourse beyond that.
I'm sorry, let me interrupt you for a second. So, the call that we had last Thursday, when I specifically asked you that question, I did not get this answer. I did not get this answer. So, changing it now is troubling to me. And so, when we had this-
What did I say over that phone call that differs from what I'm saying today?
So, the EMS investigation, when I brought that up, that's exactly the same kind of investigation I'm asking for now.
You want, and we've already discussed this, you want me to hire attorneys to look into this that have no subpoena power, that have very little authority to go in, don't have the expertise to know what a juvenile justice system should, how it should operate? It's a little different than doing a personnel matter, which is what we hired those attorneys to do, look into a personnel issue involving the direction of EMS and what you're asking for today. So my answer today isn't contradicting that in any way.
Okay, well, I guess we'll agree to disagree on that, because that's not the answer I got on Thursday. So, my question is, when we did look into the EMS investigation, how is this different? It's a county entity that we looked into, and now we're looking into another county entity. That EMS investigation was done without an RFP, it was done without a formal action by this group, and so I don't see how it's any different. That's the exact question I asked you, and you're just like, "We can do this." So help me understand now that, you know, when we're on a phone call, it's different, but now when we're in public, it's-
Again, I'll only say, and I don't have a transcript of what we talked about, but it makes no sense for me to go out and hire private counsel to do the kind of investigation that you're wanting to do, and which I've never even been, you've never even clearly articulated what kind of investigation you want.
So we can't hire the NEE Casey Foundation to come in and look at this? We can't hire anyone else? We can't have a group looking into who would be the best person? We can't discuss what an investigation looks like because we keep being told that it's not even, we can't even do it?
I haven't heard one specific proposal from you to hire anybody. The manager would have the authority, some authority, to hire some consultants to come in and look at things. I keep hearing things, names thrown out. You want us to go out and hire everybody you mentioned here?
I want to talk about it in a constructive way so that we can have community members, we can talk about it. That's what I want to do. I don't want to be told that we can't do it without even talking about it and having an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. A child died in our custody, we're trying to look into that.
My authority is only in regard to hiring attorneys. The county manager has the authority to hire some consultants, and my authority to hire attorneys in this matter makes no sense. And I would not have-
Okay, so let's not hire an attorney. If it doesn't make sense, let's not hire an attorney. Let's talk about who would be the best person to hire. You know, we spent $40,000 on an EMS investigation, and we're not even looking into spending one penny on trying to figure out what happened in JIAK with the death of a 17-year-old child? That's fine, I'm done talking about that. It's fine. So, we have this JIAK visit, I'll move on to my next question. The JIAK site visit from 2016, it talks about locally-developed detention risk assessment instrument, they switched over to the Kansas DRAI once the piloting is concluded. They're talking about involving local, upgrading local protocols and staff training. I'd like to know what local protocols and staff training were upgraded since 2016. It also talks about in the summary that there's a comprehensive training protocol for JIAK staff, and going forward as juvenile justice reforms are implemented, staff training and retraining will be a significant part of local reform efforts. So if they were trained on this, what changed from 2016 to, I mean, they said it in their report. So I guess, I don't want another report that's written that things don't get changed with. That's what I don't want. I want somebody to make sure that this doesn't happen again. How do we ensure that? We have a policy in place that says if kids are in a mental health emergency, they should not be accepted into JIAK. How can we understand and make sure that the policies that are in place, people are trained on, people know it? That's the questions that I'm asking. So I wonder, when will that incident report be completed?
Commissioner, we've had a discussion about that request. Those are paper reports that staff, as they get time, will go through and try to gather the data that you have asked for, which is age, severity. Since they are juvenile clients, we cannot divulge your names, as you've already mentioned, that would have to be redacted, but it's a hand count of the last three years, and we're hoping to have that within a few days as staff can work through that. The 2016 report that you mentioned, I think is part of the discussion as we move forward on this. And to answer your question, the way we impose change is to identify it, budget it, approve the budget for that, and move forward. And when you talk about training and equipment and staffing, there's cost to that. And so, our job is to present those requests to the commission in a budget format, make the hires, pledge to the training, fund the training, hire the staff, and move forward. And that's as it should be. I think we use the 2016 analysis in conjunction with the work that our task force, I hope, will be doing over the next few months, and that we can do it and at least wrap up some of that by the time we ratify budget this summer. So we would need something by June to add it to the budget. So, pass that on. I don't know if that answers your questions, but-
I just want to know when the, you know, is it going to take two weeks for the incident reports? Is it going to take a month? Like, I just want to, I'd like to offer that, you know, you giving me a deadline as to when I can expect to have the incident reports in some sort of usable format that I can see how many we have had. I mean, can we just go count them for the past three years? I mean, are they held in a book?
No, they're individual papers, and the goal, we have a task force meeting tomorrow night, the goal was to have that kind of information ready for them. Because I think it's a germane ask. We'd want to know historically the kinds of calls we're down there, I think that's totally legitimate. We're understaffed in corrections. We've historically been understaffed in corrections. During the pandemic time, we've been acutely understaffed, we've talked about this publicly many times. We have five employees still unadministratively leave yet, so we're even more understaffed. We're asking a staff who's trying to maintain operations daily to do extra work now to create data and research for this task force, which is important. I can't, we will get it as soon as staff can possibly get it done. I don't think it's going to be a month. I'm hoping it's a few days. We wanted it for tomorrow, and I don't think we're going to make it for the first task force meeting, but hopefully by the second task force meeting, we'll have that kind of data put together for them. Assuming they ask for it, and you've already asked for it, so we're going to produce it. But I'm hoping that the task force will ask for a lot of different kinds of things, and we'll get them as fast as we can.
So would there be an opportunity, do we need to hire an additional person to help with this? I mean, is that something that you would consider doing so that this doesn't languish and that people feel supported in their efforts to provide the information to not only the task force, but to commissioners or others who ask for information?
We could definitely consider that, we've discussed that. The problem is, these are records of children, and there's privacy components that go with that that is different than an adult system. So to bring in an outside person and give them access to that type of data on kids, name, photographs, and everything, we'd want to talk through that. Ideally, we'd like our current staff to do that, they have the capacity, the know-how, they pledge privacy for those types of records, so it would be ideal to have our staff do that.
So I'll just wrap this up by saying, you know, regardless of whether we, as Sedgwick County, have the authority to call for an investigation or conduct one ourselves, I am not going to stop pushing for this, because I think it's important to utilize this seat that I have and to listen to the people who are asking me to do this. I also just want to state that we can change this system. We can work with our state partners, we can work with nonprofit organizations, we can do this. And anybody who tells me that we can't, or that I'm naive to think that we can, I'm not going to listen to you, because I know that we can do it, and we have to work together to do it. I think it's important that the family of Cedric Lofton deserves this, our police officers deserve this, our firefighters deserve this, our EMS professionals deserve this, this county staff deserves this, the state of Kansas, everybody who works in this system deserves to have a system that is designed to keep people from re-entering. That's what we have to look forward to, that's what we have to expect. And again, I just want to close it out like this. I want to work with every person on this board, and I want us all to understand that we can do different things, we can have a different focus, and I will be supportive of your focus. I just ask that you support my focus as well. We can do it all together at the same time, because if we don't put it all in motion now, what happens is, a few policy changes will happen, we can put whatever in the budget, and then the system stays the same, and then we're going to be budgeting for the consequences again and again and again. So, I hope that we can work together and try to figure this out so that no other person dies at the hands of the government. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Chairman. So I just had a couple of just closing statements here. I do understand there are doubts with the task force, and people think that it's going to be the same thing we've done in the past, but, you know, in the past, and, I mean, I've heard it been said up here, I heard Mr. Mason say it as well, that there's been a blame game going on. That's something that we've been watching for a long time, and with this task force, getting not only the city and county together, but also bringing in our state partners as well, and having them be a part of the conversation, we remove the barriers for that blame game. We are all trying to find solutions to these problems going forward together. I hope that the people on this group can facilitate the synergy that we've been missing, quite frankly, from every department, from every level. It's important that we're not just having- It's important that we're not just having staff from one group come up with a few policy changes or one elected official coming up with a few policy changes and then saying, we've done it. We've done enough because that's what happens. I mean, that's what's happened in the past. This is the first time in my lifetime I have seen collaboration between the city and county, the way we're seeing it today. This is the first time in my lifetime I've seen both Democrats and Republicans having a majority from both city and county coming together to say that we are all on the same page to get this stuff done. Not only that, but I spoke with the state last week and I had all of them that were in the room that I spoke to agreed that stuff needs to, that something needs to change here. And so we're going to have a group of our community members, stakeholders that live here, that are raising their children here, who want to see the system get better. We're going to have them at the table to have these hard, brutal conversations. And I don't see how, I, I just don't see how we don't support that in every possible way we can. Because we can see changes in the near term and changes in the long term with this that we have never seen before. And so I, I do think it's disheartening to watch that work being hurt before it even has a chance to do something great. So I know that this is, this is a hard conversation. And CJ's life is just, I mean, what happened was incredibly tragic. And how could we not picture our own sons in that video? I mean, there's just no way we couldn't. And we have to do what we can to make these changes where it's not just one incident we are looking at, but we are looking at a system for juveniles and mental health crises, period. This is so much bigger than one night. There's been so much that has led up to this that we have to do everything we can to look at that in its entirety with our community stakeholders, with the people that need to be, to have a voice in this. You guys need to tell us how we can do better. Instead of trying to be angry and instead of trying to put blame on me and instead of trying to shift this conversation away from CJ, I mean, we need to be working together. And, and I think that's what I've struggled with the most over this last week, is to watch a divide grow when we are all on the same page to get some real lasting change done. So I hope that tomorrow's first meeting goes well. I'm very excited to thank everybody personally for being there. And, you know, we, we will see some major changes happy, happen. And I'm, I'm very, I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do and then how the city and the county and the state can come together to, to really push those through. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be very brief here. I know I've said too much already, but in the story that came out yesterday, I'm going to read just a very short sentence here. It says, "The WPD officers had discretion to change their approach and take Cedric into custody for a crime of battery of a law enforcement officer. Police and city officials have declined to comment publicly on the, on their decision, saying they're waiting for the task force to complete its three-month review." I'm going to tell you, this task force now has become an excuse not to comment. I, I find that very troubling. And I think the reality is we need to have them comment on what they did right and what they did wrong. I, I'm, I don't want to give them a reason not to comment. I'm very disturbed by that comment that they made in the, in the, in this news story. Let me just say this also. I'm, I'm very pragmatic. I, I want to follow the, the law, the laws of our state as they are currently laid out. If I don't like the, the way the laws are laid out today, I will advocate for change. There is a process. We have to follow a process. We can make change in our state laws. And right now, we're not, many, many people in this community are not satisfied with the conclusions of District Attorney Mark Bennett. But he has to follow the laws of our state. We can wish till we're dead to have things different, but they are what they are. He has to live under the Kansas laws as they are currently laid out. And so we want to make change. It might require us following a process. Along that line, this investigation, I've heard it over and over and over again. We want to have an investigation. And I appreciate comments from Mike Capoun, but the reality is, we don't have a lot of options here. If the AG doesn't want to do it, FBI doesn't want to do it, DOJ, DOJ doesn't want to do it, we don't have any options. We can't force anybody to take this up. The KBI has been involved, FBI, passed. We have to have something that makes sense. If someone wants an investigation, I, I know there's a lot of people in this community who want this to happen. Please present something to us that makes sense. Someone who has authority and the access to, to look at the evidence needs to be, needs to be looked at. They have to be able to call witnesses, put them under oath, and have access to all the testimony, all the records to make, to make, to make binding conclusions. If they can't do those things, then it doesn't make sense to me. I will support an investigation, but it has to make sense. We have to be pragmatic and live under the laws that we have in front of us. So I'm supportive of the investigation, but that's why I say the one thing that the people have is they have power to, to call a citizen's grand jury, as done by petition of the people, by the electors of our community. That's how you get this done. It is a, is a legal process. Everything else, in my opinion, I'm open to it, but you got to explain it to me in a way that makes sense. Show me how they have authority to resolve the conflict that y'all, everyone wants to have resolved. Make me understand how they can make that happen without authority and access to all the information. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank all the speakers that were here in person and those that were on Zoom with us. I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone being very attentive and listening to all of the different comments that we had today. This was a tragic situation and each and every one of us recognize that. We have created a task force and I do not want to undermine the effects of that task force and the effectiveness of it. I fully support the task force's moving forward. We have put a number of individuals on there that are going to be able to dive into the details of the system and see what we can do to be better in the future. I understand they don't have subpoena power because we can't grant that to, to individuals. But I, I don't want to undermine their efforts because they are going to volunteer their time and effort in order to get to the bottom of this and come out. And I hope, in the long run, we have some short-term ideas. And we've already talked about some of the things that we've already implemented. We need some midterm ideas and some long-term ideas of what we can do because some of them, recommendations may require state statute change and so forth. But as far as the county, and I know as the city is involved in this, we are committed to making sure that we provide the resources for this committee, this task force, to make the decisions. And I keep hearing that we can't investigate ourselves. Well, this, this committee is not made up of people that are working for the county, granted. If you look at the makeup, we have staff support and that is staff support. They don't have a vote. They are not making recommendations. They are supporting the individuals that are appointed to this task force. So I, I hope the community understands that, that we are not investigating ourselves. We are allowing the community to do an investigation of the system so that we can move forward. So again, I thank everyone. I, I know that everyone is very passionate about this. It was a very tragic incident. We want to find some, some conclusion. Before I quit, Commissioner Cruz, do you have some final comments?
Yeah. I just have one quick question. You said the staff members won't have a vote. So will this task force have voting authority? Will they have bylaws? I mean, how, how is this being?
The task force is going to meet for the very first time tomorrow and they're going to set their own rules, regulations, bylaws, whatever it takes for them to move forward. That's the thing that I do not want the county or the city to do, is get involved in how that they're going to do this. I want to make sure that they are totally independent and they can make the decisions on how to move forward.
Okay, sure. I was just wondering, because you said they, they won't have a vote.
No, I'm saying, I didn't say that. I said that staff will not have a vote.
That, that's my question. So I was just wondering if the other folks will have a vote and how that will be. So it sounds like they're going to be determining that tonight, whether they're going to vote on things. Is that?
Commissioner, I might just comment on that. The chairman has stated, I think the task force will determine what they're, how, how they choose to do their business moving forward, whether they elect a chairperson, whether they vote on issues to move things ahead. I think between the moderators and the task force, they will determine what that process will be.
Okay. And so how will the community be able to watch this? Will it be broadcast on our Facebook page, our YouTube channel? Like, where will it be held?
So it's at, we're putting out a press release on that later today. It's going to be at the Reagan Building. It is open to the public and the media to, to be there. The task force, again, will determine transparency for the future, how they choose to work, whether they want Facebook, streaming, continue to invite to the public, whether they want a bigger arena to work in. We look to them to determine future meetings on how this will go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, again, I don't see any other comments. I'm moved that receive and file, all the comments we received. We have a motion in a second. I see no discussion. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Commission, I would like to make a motion that we move to the next item, be new business, because Ms. Sherman has been sitting here all morning. And I'd like to give her an opportunity to be able to speak to us. And I appreciate her diligence. But I want that to be the next item. And after that, we will take about a 10-minute break. So I have a motion. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Denise Sherman from the Kansas African American Museum. We always appreciate you coming to visit with us. Thank you.
Well, thank you and good morning. All right. Good morning, Chair Dennis, Commissioners Meitzner, Cruz, Lopez, and Howell. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity once again to come before you and to give you a little update about the Kansas African American Museum. Today's report is basically centered around Black History Month. As I am sure that you can understand that that is very important to the business that we do at the Kansas African American Museum. What I would like to do is just kind of walk you through, through a few things and answer any questions that you may have. Again, the Kansas African American Museum endeavors to make the African American experience resonate with every Kansan. And in doing so, we follow four pillars that are extremely important to how we conduct our business. We look at art and artifacts, which is part of our collection there at the museum, as well as historical archives, education programs, and cultural programs and events that are very important to cultural awareness, cultural enrichment, cultural engagement, and cultural immersion. As mentioned earlier, Black History Month is not, Black History Month is really not an accident. Black History Month was started by Carter G. Woodson, who was born in 1875 in New Canton, Virginia, and he lived until 1950. He was an American historian, author, journalist, and founder of the Association of the Study of African American Life and History. One of the first scholars to study the history of African diaspora, including African history, Carter G. Woodson was a son of former slaves and he worked as, in the coal mines as a youth. Now, this is very important. Carter G. Woodson did not attend school regularly and he was 20 years old before he attended Douglas High School and finished high school by working full-time and attending full-time to receive his diploma in 1897. From there, Carter G. Woodson attended Berea College and became a teacher and a school administrator. He obtained graduate degrees at the University of Chicago and a PhD from Harvard University in 1912. He spent his academic career at Howard University, which we all know is an HBCU, Historical Black College and University in Washington DC, and served as the Dean of College of Arts and Sciences and devoted his life to historical research. Carter G. Woodson was the founder of the Journal of Negro History in 1916. And this Harvard-trained historian, along with James, with Minister Jesse Moreland, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, also known as NSNLH, an organization dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by Black Americans and other peoples of African descent, which in February 1926 was the beginnings of Black History Week. This coincided with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. In 1970, Black History Week was expanded to Black History Month by Black units, Black United Students and Black Educators at Kent State University. Since 1976, every president has designated February as Black History Month and Carter G. Woodson believed that American history must include African American history in order to be complete. And I share this information with you because, again, this is what the existence and the importance of the Kansas African American Museum. As we continue to celebrate the richness of African American experiences, we are more than a housing of collections and we provide space to explore, reflect, and remind us all of our interconnectedness. If you come to the Kansas African American Museum today, you will see in our current exhibition in our main gallery, a portrait of a man tapping into essence, using portraiture and artwork to celebrate the death and character of influential African American men right here in Kansas and beyond. And I think it's important for you to know that the majority of the men that are featured in this exhibition are from Wichita and again, from Kansas and the surrounding area. And you would recognize many of them. Another exhibition you would see is Defining Black Wichita, Instalments 1 and 2, sharing the African American's story who settled here in Wichita. And more importantly, they settle right here in this community where we are standing today. Africa, the Kansas exhibition that displays an extensive collection of African art and artifacts from the continent of Africa. And then, as we have moved virtually into a space where we are able to share more information, not only locally, across the state, the United States and globally, a 2021 A Tribute to Trailblazers Hall of Fame is where you will see portraits of five exceptional Kansans who have mastered and excelled in their collective professions, many being the first to carve a pathway for others to follow. And I do want to take just a quick minute, if you have not seen the 2021 A Tribute to Trailblazers, it is still available on our website. And I would like to call the names of those who were honored and inducted this past year. Dr. Larry Mittenall, psychiatrist with Ascension Via Christi, was our Doris Kerr Larkins awardee. Honorable Julie A. Robinson, US District Judge, District of Kansas. Chanelle Jones OJ, New York News anchor. Deputy Wanda Chief Givens, Parker Givens, retired Wichita City of Wichita. And Dr. John Brooks Slaughter, native Topeka, Kansan, and then University of Southern California. I share all that to share that partnerships and collaborations are very important. And the Kansas African American, American Museum has partnered with Exploration Place as they are presenting an outdoor exhibition featuring African Americans and STEM scientists, sciences. And this nightly display is this collaboration again between TCAM and the National Informal STEM Education Network. And this is important because it is our hope at the Kansas African American Museum that others will see the importance of scientists, African American sciences, in STEM programs and encourage others to follow suit. In doing so, you see right now, the first installment for this week will be Katherine Johnson. And Katherine Johnson was a NASA mathematician featured in the 2016 movie Hidden Figures. Week two would be Warren Washington, internationally recognized atmospheric scientist. May Jimmison, astronaut, physician, and engineer. And then Dr. John Brooks Slaughter, who I mentioned earlier, a Kansas native and engineer with the National Science Foundation. He was the first director. To find out more about this, this Thursday, tomorrow at noon, we are again having a program with Exploration Place. And I will have an opportunity to share with Laura Roddy and Victoria Mitchell during a conversation that will be aired at noon on Facebook via our TCAM Thursdays program. And so we ask that you go to our website during that time period at noon tomorrow and listen to about a 30-minute presentation as we talk about not only this collaboration, but the importance of STEM sciences and the African Americans who've made these significant contributions. I just want to touch a little bit more about collaborations and partnerships. And this has been very important for the growth, I think, not only of the Kansas African American Museum over the last couple of years, but also for our community. And so even today, as there's been an exchange of ideas, information, interaction, and communication, we also have experienced innovation, creativity, and productivity as we are sharing more information, expansion of initiatives, acknowledgement, and purpose, as well as fulfillment of mission, vision, and strategic planning. vision, and strategic planning. One beautiful thing about this is the optimization of resources for a greater impact in our community. And without sacrificing or cannibalizing anyone's specialty, we are still unique, and we all have an opportunity to share our cultural, respective, and humanities as it relates to the type of work that we do. I circle back to say that the importance of Black History Month is viable. Black History Month is important because it provides an opportunity for us to really understand greater unity, bridging our shared history. And that was really the focus of G. Carter Woodson. Cultivating cultural awareness, engagement, enrichment, and immersion is necessary for one to expand education beyond your traditional experiences. A lot of things that you learn at the Kansas African American Museum or any entity that shares information about African American contributions is usually not always available in your traditional resources and/or your educational opportunities. And so by doing that, we encourage people to seek those opportunities out to learn more. Expansion of diversity, equity, inclusion, and acceptance, and building stronger communities, which, again, I believe we are all here to do. And then the appreciation of others for their unique contributions in our society. And, you know, for the 28 days that there is in February, we want to share that African American history is not limited to one month. It is available throughout the entire year, an entire lifetime. And so we encourage people, even if they're not coming to the museum, there are other places that they can certainly seek and learn more. And we want you to know that as you do so, that you make this intentional and purposeful. We end this with just a statement, "We are culture." And we adopted this overall umbrella in 2019. And this has served us well to help people understand and to embrace that culture is important, cultural is necessary, if we want to expand on all the other things that we not only heard here today, but also for self-reflection and self-growth. So we invite you to visit our website at www.tcammuseum.org to learn more. And hopefully tomorrow, you'll join us and find out more about the partnership and the presentation for the outdoor exhibition with Exploration Place, that we are very proud to be a part and a collaborative partner with them. And that's all I have today.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Sherman. We appreciate you very much being here. And I want to urge people not to just go to the website, but go and visit TCAM in person and see what they've got to share. They've got an impressive collection. It's not all out. There's a huge collection that's still in vaults downstairs. But each time that I've been over there, they've changed, so it's different each time that you go over and visit. So I urge everyone to go and visit TCAM. And thanks for everything that you do. And thanks for helping us recognize Black History Month.
You bet, and thank you.
And Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership here in our community, I think, for the presentation. When I was in high school especially, I think back to my school age, history was my worst topic. I hated history, but I really love history now because the stories really changed my perspective and helped me understand how people dealt with all kinds of issues in our past. And so I actually really like history now. That movie Hidden Figures was incredible. I did not know the story of that. But these are true stories. And so there's many other things like that where I've been able to understand a little bit better some of the perspective of those that came before us. But I'm especially proud of Kansas. I think we have some very notable stories and notable people, especially in Kansas. I think we have great history in our state. So with that, I appreciate you coming to help us understand that better and give us a chance to understand our opportunities over at TCAM. I wanted to just ask you, in one or few sentences, if you could just give us a quick update on your digs. What's your situation with your location? And where are we at with future opportunities and a better location?
Well, Kansas African American Museum is still moving forward with our vision to find, well, to have a better location to display our exhibitions and to have community involved with us, to have immersive experiences, and to really, you know, take part in all that we have to offer. We are still in a phase where we have not been able to make all of our arrangements, but as soon as we do, we will be back to make that full report. And hopefully, that will be soon. I will share one thing. We are embarking on our 25th anniversary, which you will hear more of next month, as we've been with the museum 25 years. So while the business and while the location has been there over 100 years, first starting as the church, and then again in 1970 to becoming the first national black historical society, and then in 1997 becoming the Kansas African American Museum, we are further, we are committed to furthering that, our placement in the community, and making sure that we have a sustainable future for the museum.
If people want to donate to the effort to be relocated to a better location, how do they do that?
Well, we will have plans in the future that we'll be able to share. I don't have any plans that I could share with you today.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you for asking.
Well, Ms. Sherman, thank you again for being here. I sincerely appreciate it. I don't see any other questions or comments. I appreciate your time.
And we do want to thank the county for all that you do to help support us in our efforts. We are appreciative, and we know that as we move ourselves forward and the community forward, that it will be a great, great opportunity to expand on all of our collective efforts.
Sounds great. Well, with that, I make a motion that we receive and file.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And at this time, I'd like to take a break until 11:30. See everyone back at 11:30. Thank you.
Well, good morning and welcome back to the meeting for February 2nd, 2022. I appreciate everyone having an opportunity to take a break. I'll call the meeting back to order at this time. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of January 12th, 2022.
All commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes for January 12th, 2022. Have not heard of anyone that has anything that they'd like to change. I make a motion that we approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, resolution appointing Amanda Kingry to the Cedric County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board as the education representative.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. The appointment today of Amanda Kingry to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board is for the education representative. This is a 17-member board authorized by statute and by county resolution. Each county commissioner has one appointment to this board, but there are a number of at-large appointments too and specified appointments such as this one, education. We have the district attorney, chief of police, sheriff, a lot of other people have appointments to this board as well. So this is because Mr. Alvarez's appointment in his position has expired and Linda Martins is recommending that you appoint Amanda Kingry and the resolutions in proper form asks you to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Papun. I appreciate it. I make a motion that we appoint Amanda Kingry to the Cedric County Juvenile Correction Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item D, a resolution authorizing and providing for the construction of renovations and improvements to certain public buildings in Cedric County, Kansas, and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof.
Well, good morning, Lindsey, and welcome.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. You are going to get so sick of finance today. This is the first of three items where you'll get to experience me. So first, as you heard, this is a resolution regarding facility bonds. Garth Herman with Bond Counsel Gilmore and Bell is on the line, and so if you have questions, I will be delighted to refer you to him. But similar to what you all approved several weeks ago related to the West Clinic remodel for the Health Department, what this resolution seeks to do is take every project that had been approved as a part of your 2022 capital improvement program that was going to be funded with bonds, and it seeks to basically get permission to start spending money on those projects now, and it preserves our right to issue bonds at a later date. These are just cost estimates that are listed. You'll see that there's several projects here on the campus. There's a main courthouse chiller rebuild and cooling tower. Adult detention facility has a secondary domestic water main supply and the relocation of an electrical busway. We do have the community crisis center expansion, although we know that that conversation is still ongoing. The expansion of the household hazardous waste facility and then remodel of our 911 offices. So those projects were included as a part of your 2022 plan. This would allow us to start spending money to do that work and design and all of that, and again, preserve our right to issue bonds in whatever the actual dollar amount is at some later point down the road. This is not an actual bond issuance today. It doesn't set us up to do that. We will have to return to you before anything like that happens. This just preserves that authority. So that, I'm happy to field any questions or refer you to Garth. If not, I authorize you vote to approve the resolution.
Well, thank you, Lindsey. I appreciate the clarification that we are not issuing bonds at this time. We're just having the authority to do it in a future date. So I don't see any questions whatsoever. I move that we adopt a resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't see any comments. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, a resolution declaring it necessary to build or repair existing bridges in the county under the authority of KSA 68-1103 and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof.
Lindsey, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. I got so far away. So this item is very similar in scope to what we just talked about. This is pertaining to bridge projects that were included in the 2022 adopted CIP that are to be funded with bonds. Your backup shows a total of 3.26 million. That is the total to be spent on the projects. Only about 1.9 million, just a little north of that, is actually planned to be bond-funded. Of course, you've seen Jim Weber's notes recently about the challenges they're experiencing. So again, the hope is to be able to do these in 2022, but we will just have to see how the supply chain and labor forces work. So again, happy to answer any questions. Garth, I believe, still remains on the line. If not, I would recommend you authorize the resolution.
Well, thank you. And normally, we'd have Jim Weber here today, but he's got two things going on. One is he's trying to keep our roads clear out in the country, and second of all, he's got COVID, so we don't want him here anyway.
That's right.
So, anyway, I just wanted to explain why we didn't have our Director of Public Work. So I don't see any questions whatsoever, so I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't see any comments. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, update on COVID-19 fiscal response.
Well, Lindsey, welcome back.
I'm delighted to be here. I know you're so surprised. For the record, Lindsey Povisso, you're CFO. Sorry, I did not do that on the last item. So I hope you all have some caffeine. You have in front of you a lengthy PowerPoint. Brent and I will cover with you today are updates to the final rule that came out on January 6th that has significantly broadened eligibility. I'm actually going to use NACO's PowerPoint. I tried to do my own and then realized they'd done all the hard work and done good stuff, so we're just going to use that. And then Brent will come up and make this a little more germane to our day-to-day lives and give you an update on what we learned from our ongoing needs survey as well as the letters of interest so that we can begin to lay the groundwork for your next spending plan that will kick into effect April 1st. So we will go ahead and jump into this. Just a quick reminder of what this money is that we're talking about because there are so many buckets under ARPA. This is the state and local fiscal recovery fund. We are, we have been allocated 100.2 million. We received our first funding allocation last June. Half of that money, we will get our second half, June 1st of this year. You can see that collectively within our county, we have received about 186.3 million. And then, of course, the state of Kansas received just less than 1.6 billion, and they're going through their own spark process, and I know you've been made aware of those. So the authorized uses have not changed in the final rule. This is actually part of the American Rescue Plan Act law. And so response to the COVID-19 public health emergency and its negative economic impacts, premium pay, the cost of government services to the extent that funding was reduced, and investments in water sewer and broadband. So the law was signed into effect, not even a whole year ago, back on March 11th. These slides kind of show you the timeline of what's happened, when guidance was issued, what external steps we have taken. You all have approved spending plans at various points, starting last July and onward. And then, like we said, the final rule came out January 6th. It is not mandatory to comply with that rule until April 1st, but we can choose to start following it now if we would like. And you'll see why that's important as we get through all of the broadened uses. So I had shared with you that we submitted our very first ARPA report last week, actually early, so yay, team. We reported in that report actual expenditures of 22.7 million. Your first quarter spending plan for this year was right at 10.7 million. And then yesterday, the question, I believe Commissioner Cruz asked us, how much else is committed? How much is available to the community? And so we looked through what the requests were that we've received so far related to anticipated expenditures for court backlog, for the sheriff camera system, for PPE, and some of those things. And that's right at 17.1 million. Now, you all have not approved that yet, but that is something that we would expect to be a part of the projects that have already been a part of your spending plan to this point. I think it's really important, though, to note based on our conversation yesterday, that this does not include any estimates for what the public health response will be because there's so much in flux with that. Obviously, we know there's testing, maybe wastewater analysis, vaccinations, and all of that, and of course, changing variants. Rules have changed regarding how private insurance can pay for things, so the landscape is changing a lot, so we didn't feel like we had good data to estimate as a part of this discussion. But we will be coming to you with that as a part of your next spend plan, obviously. So all told, if we look at all of those things, then that reflects a commitment of 50.5 million, which is roughly half of our total allocation. So let's get into the final rule details. So this is NACO's presentation. I will try and do them justice. So key highlights of the guidance are listed here, but they are, there are deeper dives on each of these points throughout the presentation. As we said, it goes into effect April 1st. It does allow a standard deduction for folks to use lost revenue of up to 10 million. Our accounting director, Hope Hernandez, has done calculations for us based on what you see in number three, that it improves the revenue loss formula. We are allowed to assume a revenue loss of 5.2% of most of our revenues on an annual basis. We are so large that we exceed 10 million every year. We actually are around 15 million per year, and so we'll talk more about that here in a few minutes. It does clarify the use of funds for capital expenditures. Don't get too excited about that yet because you'll see all the details down the road, but remember, revenue loss is there. It talks about how populations are defined in terms of whether they were impacted by the pandemic or disproportionately impacted, and how we can come to those conclusions. That helps us establish services and programs that go to them. It talks about options for premium pay, authorizes rehiring of local government staff, assuming you can find them, right? Allows recovery funds to be used for modernization of cybersecurity. It broadens eligible uses of water in sewer projects. What is not called out on this slide but is called out later is that that now includes stormwater. So that's certainly something we'll want to talk about, although there is, of course, the infrastructure bill that's out there. And then it broadens the eligible broadband infrastructure investments. It does talk about wireline as a specific way to provide that broadband. I know we've had those conversations in the past. So this is basically a restatement of what we saw on prior slides, so I'm going to move to slide nine. So NACO includes this distinction for us, and I think it's a really good one. So we do have a 437-page document that we're working off of for the final rule. Throughout, there are different uses of terms. So there are should or must, which means we have to do it in order to be compliant with federal rules. And then there's a and encourage. So Treasury often says, we would like you to do this, but you don't have to. It's at our discretion. But throughout, there is constantly language that says proportional and reasonable. So we have to assess the level of harm due to COVID, due to the impact of COVID, and then respond proportionally to that harm. And so that is something that we'll need to keep in mind and do some analysis of as we go through what types of things we want to propose. So moving to replacing lost revenue, the key new features in the final rule, like I said, there's a standard deduction of 10 million. We are large enough that that is not something that is helpful to us, but it would be very, very helpful to small entities who receive less than $10 million total because it means they can use their entire allocation that they got to pay for traditional government services. They still have to follow the uniform guidance. This doesn't allow us to escape that portion, but that is something that is out there. So, and you can see, NACO notes that that's 70% of folks who received these funds. So then, option two, improvements to the revenue loss formula, again, that's what we will be focusing most on. And in the interim rule, it allowed us to assume 4.1% growth. This new final rule allows us to assume 5.2% growth per year that should have happened, and so we are essentially allowed to use that portion as lost revenue that we would operate any traditional government service with. It would allow us to take a different look from a technical standpoint on fiscal year basis, but we're already on a calendar fiscal year, so that part doesn't affect us. So what then does replacing lost revenue?
Lindsey, I think we have a question.
Okay.
Commissioner Howell.
Commissioner Cruz, I'm sorry.
And I don't know what your preference is, Chairman, about asking questions as we go or waiting till the end.
No, if you've got a question, I'll.
So this revenue loss, how does that specifically affect our comm care services? Because those...
So we are allowed to use lost revenue for anything that we would traditionally use it for. So if we wanted to spend that on the payroll that we would normally spend, we can do that. If we, for comm care, I think the issue is becoming you still have to follow your own county practices and procedures, right? And so we're still tied to our pay plan and things of that nature, if that's what you're getting after.
Well, the access of services, and we saw a decrease in services. I mean, isn't that right, Tim? I mean, we kind of saw a decrease in our services in that that's a fee-for-service model, so we weren't able to collect that revenue because people weren't accessing the services. And so would that be considered lost revenue?
I'll let Lindsey answer that, but you are correct. There were, there was a significant revenue drop for comm care, particularly in 2020 in response to the pandemic, still being experienced to a lesser degree in '21 and
So to answer your question, yes. Anything we would traditionally do, we can use these ARPA funds to do. We just have to follow uniform guidance and our own practices and procedures.
So will you come back with a plan about what, if we, if we were to utilize this revenue loss, how do you plan to allocate these funds? this, um, revenue loss, um, how do you plan to allocate these funds if we do allocate any of these funds for that purpose?
So what we plan to do after this presentation today, because there's a lot more to come, uh, is we will come and visit with commissioners, based on what you hear about letters of interest and all of the needs in the community. Uh, we need to do a refreshed needs assessment for the organization based on this final rule. And so, uh, what we would do is basically submit, uh, a form out to the departments to say, here are all the things that you can do. What would you like to propose? What needs do you have related to this? And we will compile that and bring that to the commission as well as whatever we've heard from the community so that you can identify your priorities. Because there are going to be more asks than there are money, and that's just a reality this round.
Yeah, sure. Okay, thank you, Lindsay.
Sure.
Now it's Commissioner Howell.
Okay.
Thank you for the chance to speak. Um, so just to be clear, for example, if we wanted to use the money to pay off debt, for example, we could do that if we wanted to.
Unfortunately, we haven't gotten to that part, but no, that is not an allowable use of that service.
So it's not exactly like property tax dollars, but it's about as.
Not quite.
Okay. I'll, I'll just share, uh, uh, an opinion. I think for us to, you know, to, uh, improve our position as a county to, uh, invest this in capital, for example, I think is, uh, is certainly interesting to me. But I'm very cautious about setting up program, um, operations, if you will, with these dollars because again, this is a one-time infusion of cash. It's not going to be there down the road. It creates a dependency, if you will. If we create programming, that dependency is going to have a, a real challenge going forward. So in my mind, if we use this for capital or for some type of, you know, short-term, uh, usage, to me, that's more appropriate, but to set up any type of long-term operations is a real problem for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Howell. We, we need to make sure that we, uh, use the funding for things that we need now. And if we start new programs with it, then we have to carry those forward, so I don't want to see that happen.
Okay. Well, thank you for that feedback.
I don't see any other questions. Press on.
Okay. Um, so the, uh, NACO folks did include some examples of what replacing lost revenue could look like. Again, it's any traditional government service, but some examples were the construction of schools and hospitals, road building and maintenance, health services, general government, uh, environmental remediation, or public safety services. So really, anything we do, um, we, we can pay for with this. Now, on the right side of this slide, uh, to get to Commissioner Howell's question, it highlights what things we cannot do. Uh, we cannot use it for rainy day funds, for debt service, or for extraordinary pension contributions. So if we have staff that we've hired, we're allowed to pay their retirement costs, but if we were the state of Kansas, we wouldn't be allowed to infuse a lot of extra money into the pension fund. So, um, key takeaways, uh, this is really more of a technical slide, so we're going to keep moving. Um, we've already talked about what we can't use it on. Um, it does, uh, also state in the rule, and this is relatively new, and if you've been watching the news, you've seen Arizona come up. Uh, they got a threatening letter from Treasury, um, because they were going to use their ARPA funds to actually undermine the CDC guidance, um, related to mask mandates and, and things that they had to do. So the Treasury has now spelled out very clearly in the final rule that we cannot use our funds to actively work against, um, the recommended practices to contain COVID. And then, uh, something we mentioned yesterday at staff meeting, the final rule also takes the time to explicitly talk multiple times about conflict of interest, and that it must be free of actual or perceived conflict of interest, and it states that we must have a policy on file. And so when we come to you, uh, with a proposed spending plan for your consideration, we are also working on a conflict of interest policy based on what other folks do who, who already have something in place to comply with federal rules. We'll mull it after that, and we'll bring it to you for ratification at that time so that we can check that box in the final rule. So, uh, one of the categories that we talked about is an eligible use was public health and negative economic impacts. So the rule spells out a lot more about what that means, and so they break it into several, um, buckets. Uh, the first thing that NACO does here is call out some of the significant changes. It changes who an impacted industry can be. Um, it expands the use that we can have for the public sector. So if you remember in the interim rule, we talked about we could hire staff up to where we had been, um, before the pandemic hat hit, assuming that we'd made cuts. Um, now this allows us to hire up to 7.5% above that pre-pandemic ba- baseline and use these funds for that purpose. Now, again, that assumes that we can fill those positions. We're already having challenges throughout the organization with, with filling the positions that we already have on the staffing table. Um, it also talks about support for staff retention. Um, unfortunately, that's not quite as broad as we would like it to be. Um, it has to be to a point where basically, uh, an employee could be in a situation to have an actual job offer before we could even contemplate this, um, which brings up other issues. So that's, that's something that's allowable, but a kind of a tricky situation, I think, to actually execute. Um, and then it talks about capital expenditures, but again, and we'll talk about this much more down the road, um, it must respond to the pandemic itself, and it has to be proportional to the impact. Um, and there is written justification that we have to have and potentially file, uh, based on dollar amounts. So, um, as I said, the public health and negative economic impacts focuses on a few, uh, different groupings, public health, households, small businesses, nonprofits, other impacted industries, and it tells us how to identify those, and then again, public sector. So the public health response, I think this is very germane to our conversation based on yesterday's discussion about testing. So COVID-19 mitigation is absolutely an allowable expense of ARPA. That includes vaccination and testing, the contact tracing, if, um, that gets turned back on, public health data systems, COVID-19 prevention and treatment, support for isolation and quarantine, transportation to help folks get to, uh, testing sites, um, and then support for this other public facilities or schools or small businesses to try and respond to it within their own, um, facilities. And then emergency operations centers and emergency response equipment. All of those things are considered allowable uses. There are more than this, um, but these are the ones that the final rule actually has gone to the trouble of spelling out. The public health response also allows for medical expenses to be paid, and this is a really interesting slide for us because it, the final rule, well, it's not explicitly spelled out on this slide, the final rule itself allows, um, entities with self-insured health plans, like us, to pay for COVID-19-related costs. So treatments, hospitalizations, things like that, that have been, um, funded out of our employee benefit fund, potentially could be reimbursed with ARPA funds. So that will be something that we would want to consider potentially. Beyond that, for the community, um, it would allow us to do unreimbursed expenses for COVID care, so if someone doesn't have insurance. Um, there is paid family and medical leave for, um, public employees. So if folks, um, had certain conditions, we could, uh, potentially provide that leave. Um, emergency medical response expenses, again, tied to COVID and not compensated. And then treatment of long-term symptoms or effects of COVID-19. And certainly, I think from a self-insured plan, that would be something we'd want to take into account as well. So then something I know that is very near and dear to this commission is this slide 18, behavioral health care. So you can see that, um, NACO has underlined and bolded that it is the general public. We are allowed to assume that the general public has been negatively impacted by the pandemic in terms of behavioral health care. We don't have to prove that someone was. And so we are allowed to do behavioral health facilities and equipment, uh, prevention, outpatient treatment, inpatient treatment, crisis care, diversion programs, uh, behavioral health services in schools, um, and so on and so forth. Another thing that jumps out at me on this page is the 988 National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, although I know that we have other grants, um, that are providing some support for that. Um, but then, uh, finally, also expansion of access to evidence-based services for opioid use disorder prevention, treatment, harm reduction, and recovery.
We have a question.
Okay.
Commissioner Cruz.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. So on the first bullet with behavioral health facilities and equipment, does that just include construction, and does that include land acquisition?
As far as I know, it would include everything.
Okay. Um, and then the last bullet, as far as expansion of access to evidence-based services for opioid use disorder, when we talk about what some of the issues are in our community, we've heard, you know, meth is a huge issue. Um, when we talk about harm reduction strategies, just asked Tim if we're doing any of these, those are kind of not all that popular because it seems, I mean, I think that they are, um, necessary when we talk about getting people off of drugs. It's like, we don't want them to use it at all, but would they be more productive if they used a little bit of it, maybe? Um, you know, so there's, I think there's some, uh, discussion around that, and I won't get into it because I don't want to take up a lot of time, but is that just for opioid? I guess my question being, or would that be for other drugs as well?
So this is a non, this is not a comprehensive list.
Okay.
I think we can make a case, if we have the data to show it.
Okay.
Um, that we could potentially use that.
Okay. And so then, okay, I'll, I'll save my question for later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, that's all the questions right now.
Thank you, Chairman.
So slide 19, again, for negative economic impacts, there is a group that has been identified that we can help households, um, that were impacted by the pandemic. And so it defines, um, some presumptions. Again, we can, if folks have this box checked, then we can presume that they were impacted, and we could have a reasonable and proportional program to assist them. And so that is defined as lower moderate income households or communities, which there is an actual dollar amount that's tied to that, uh, and a formula that we can compute and provide for you. Households that experience unemployment, increased student housing, uh, insecurity, those that qualify for CHIP or childcare subsidies, et cetera, National Housing Trust Fund, and then any student that lost, uh, in-person education. And so these are some examples of types of assistance on slide 20, um, that can be provided. Food assistance, housing assistance, health insurance, cash assistance, childcare, et cetera. So then slide 21, so impacted, um, you saw what that definition was. Disproportionately impacted, um, means they experienced a much greater level of harm from the pandemic, and it, again, defines certain types of categories, low income, uh, those who would live or do business in a qualified census tract, which I think we shared with you that data, um, back toward the beginning. That's a lot of, uh, urban Wichita mostly that is qualified census tract. Um, and then, uh, not necessarily relevant to us as much as households receiving services, uh, provided by tribal governments. So for those folks, not only are they entitled to the same types of services, maybe not entitled, they could receive, could be eligible for everything that an impacted household was, but then they also have some potential additional services that are listed here. And so that includes things like primary care clinics, housing vouchers, um, improvements to vacant or abandoned properties, uh, et cetera. I don't want to read every bullet to you. I assume you can read later. Um, so this basically, this slide here defines what each of those dollar amounts would be, um, the formulas that are provided. So then slide 24 talks about the same type of thing, assistance to small businesses, whether they're impacted or disproportionately impacted. Uh, it defines a small business as, uh, no more than 500 employees, is independently owned and operated, and is not dominant in its field of operation. And this definition apparently comes from the Small Business Administration, so.
Quick question. Uh, city of Wichita has these same requirements, right?
Yes. Everyone who has received this bucket of funding, so state, other cities, are subject to these.
Okay. So, uh, some of these things, uh, may be more appropriate for the city of Wichita to address than the county.
Absolutely. Or even the state of Kansas because they have some unique resources that neither city nor county would have.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, you can see here what defines an impacted small business and what defines a disproportionately impacted small business. Um, and then you can see the eligible uses. Um, so loans or grants are eligible, but loans are tricky, um, because what the rule says is that if we make a loan, that loan basically has to be repaid by the end of the ARPA term. Um, if it's repaid and not allocated by that time, then that's basically money we would give back to the feds. Um, so that's kind of a, uh, an interesting thing to try and think through, um, but it does also allow technical assistance. And then you can see for disproportionately impacted businesses that it expands those potential opportunities. Um, assistance to nonprofits looks a lot like small business, um, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. And then aid to impacted industries. So again, this is something that the final rule does, is it expands the eligibility for an impacted industry and gives us a definition of what that is. So if it is travel, tourism, or hospitality, it's presumed to have been impacted. If it's not one of those, then it gives us some criteria to use if they've experienced at least 8% employment loss or, uh, comparable or worse economic impacts. So, um, that is something that then this group could define and provide some kind of, again, reasonable and proportional program. Um, restoring public sector capacity, um, number one talks about payroll and covered benefits to certain types of employees. However, what the rule says, and this is different from cares, um, we must be able to document their time is spent dedicated to COVID and only reimbursed for that. Uh, it would allow us to rehire staff, um, and it would, uh, allow us to provide some worker retention incentives. Now, again, that comes with a lot of criteria to it, um, and so I'm not real sure how practical or feasible that is. Um, and then covering the administrative costs associated with administering hiring, uh, support or retention programs. So to administer those programs, and that could be something that we could, uh, pursue to try and support the rest of the organization. And then effective service delivery. So you can see on this slide who they define as those staff that could be eligible so long as we can substantiate that their time was dedicated to COVID. Uh, you can see the different, uh, definitions here on slide 30, um, about what, uh, how we would calculate the number of FTEs we're allowed to have and hire. On slide 31, uh, this talks about, um, the ways that we can, uh, use ARPA funds to do effective service delivery. So we can do program evaluation, data, and outreach, uh, which includes technology infrastructure to improve access to you and user experience of government IT systems. I know we've talked about a county website, that would be something that could be a potential use here. Um, and then, of course, administrative needs, backlogs, that's a, been a huge part of our discussion so far, so they've gone so far as to talk about that, and then again, technology infrastructure. Um, so now let's get to capital expenditures. So bear in mind, as we talk about capital expenditures, that we still have the whole revenue replacement bucket that can be used for traditional government services as well. So this isn't the only avenue to do capital expenditures. So if they are responding to the public health or negative econo- neco- economic impact, good grief, I'm sorry, um, then you can see what we have to do if it's a project that's greater than a million dollars. Um, I want to point out number three here because this is going to be a significant amount of workload. We have to compare the project we want to do at, with at least two viable alternative, so we actually have to come up with alternatives. And then we have to provide a written justification as to why the project is superior that we selected. Uh, this talks about, um, the different types of, uh, written justifications we have to do, and when we provide those to the Treasury. Uh, it gives us examples here on slide 34 of what eligible, um, expenses would be. Uh, certainly, you can see medical facilities generally dedicated to COVID-19 treatment and mitigation. Um, I think we've thought of maybe some testing, uh, dedicated testing sites that were not constantly moving around, um, maybe PPE, wear health, things like that will be things we talked through. Behavioral health facilities are listed here, and then again, improvements to vacant and abandoned properties. Um, ineligible expenses are new correctional facilities, new congregate facilities, um, and convention centers, stadiums, and other things that would be considered for general economic development. Um, slide 35 talks about premium pay. Oh.
Um, what is included in a congregate facility?
So that would be, um, like if you have a, um, trying to think if we have any. We don't really, but if you had a group home, um, or something like that, it's not a detention facility or a correctional facility, but it is something where you have lots of folks living together.
So it wouldn't be like another project like the- So it wouldn't be like another project, like the studios, that was like permanent supportive housing? That would be considered housing?
I would have to ask that question. I don't know the answer to that. I'll stop my head, I'm sorry.
Not that that's happening, but it might. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Premium pay, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because we've already done that program and checked that box. So we're going to move to slide 37, water and sewer infrastructure. So under the interim final rule, it was pretty focused on just certain types of projects that would qualify under other federal programs. The final rule has opened that up to say that we can do lead remediation projects, culverts, residential wells, dams, and reservoirs, but it also talks about stormwater. And so that is shown here on, let's see, slide 38, which I apologize, it looks like the page number isn't on there. But you can see in that third bullet on the left, oh, I'm sorry, second bullet on the left, the replacement of storm sewers and additional types of stormwater infrastructure. So certainly, that's something that we're intrigued by.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. In my district, we have a lot of problems with groundwater. Does it discuss groundwater at all?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, revenue replacement is a very broad category. If it's a traditional government service, as long as we comply with uniform guidance, that opens a lot of options up for us to consider. We're going to hear revenue replacement a lot.
So does stormwater apply or not?
Yes. Stormwater does, groundwater is not mentioned.
Okay. So we've got this project that hopefully we get funded from the federal government on, to stop the problem we had with the 98 flood. And the city and county are going to have to pay part of that, but the federal government's going to pay a big chunk of it. Would we be able to use this to pay the, our local share, or because the federal government's paying the bulk of it, it wouldn't apply?
There are certain limitations on federal matches in the final rule. I think this one would be eligible, we can make sure.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
So then broadband infrastructure, another subject that is popular, but again, we know that the infrastructure bill has money dedicated to broadband, so that's going to be another conversation we want to have. But this does allow to invest in locations with a lesser degree of speed than what was required under the interim final rule, and allows us to do that more globally now, as opposed to just targeting certain geographic areas. And so this slide 40 outlines how that would happen.
Let's stay on 39 for just a second.
Okay.
The first bullet says counties are required to invest in households and businesses without reliable. What's the required mean?
If we had chosen to do it, we would have to do the, these types of households and businesses only.
Okay. Thank you.
Doesn't mean we had to use our money that way.
No, but what I'm worried about is all of our rural portions of Sedgwick County, they're all underserved.
Absolutely. So yes, this could be a potential solution. What this slide 40 does is kind of talk through the analysis of how we would figure out who can do that. And so the eligible area would have to be without that access, so we would have to be able to demonstrate that. But then beyond that, it says we can basically figure out what it is that we need, as long as we have some minimum standards in place. I will point out, though, number three on this slide, and that is, any entity that we work with to do this expansion must provide then a low-cost option for as long as that infrastructure is in place and used. And so that is something that we would want to make sure that is complied with. So certainly, something that's good to know. Well, and then Commissioner, or Chairman Dennis, you just forecasted slide 41 for me, so thank you. So it talks about the non, the revenue loss formula. We can use it to meet the non-federal cost share, except for Medicaid and CHIP programs. So there you go. There's the answer to your question. Recovery funds beyond that revenue loss amount, which again is substantial for us, can't be used that way. We've already talked about the ineligible expenses. Again, they take pains to point out the conflict of interest policy, so we'll make sure we get that for you. And then it has answered the question about net reduction in revenues, if there are property tax reductions or things like that, how that plays out. That has been clarified, that it only applies to states and territories in this. Uh-oh.
The question is, what is potpourri?
Where do you see that one?
Bottom of 43.
Oh, you're jumping ahead of me. Okay. That's good, that's a, you have jumped to Brent's slides. So I am done with my part of the presentation. I will let him fill that question for you. There is a good answer, I do know the answer, but we'll let him share it. But are there any questions I can answer before I turn it over to him?
Any questions for Lindsay before we bring Brent up? I don't see any. Thank you.
I'm sure he'll be much more exciting. So thank you for your time this morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Brent.
Good morning, Chairman Dennis, members of the County Commission for the record, Brent Shelton, your deputy CFO. As Lindsay mentioned, as we've received the final guidance, we've waited a long time for that, and what we were doing in the, during that process was gathering public comment. One of the statements in the interim guidance was to engage the community and determine needs of the community for potential external programs that might be established. So we've been doing that process, and before I jump into the specifics of, of the letters of interest, let me just kind of refresh our memories, and for those that may be watching, the process that the county has embarked upon since we received the ARPA dollars earlier or last year. So if you recall, we established those focus groups last summer. They spoke to around six different areas that were designed around the buckets of money that were available in ARPA. We've also been engaged in an external needs assessment that both predated and postdated those focus groups. It's kind of part of a grants administration cycle, if you will, in terms of gathering information from the community, because we would like the programs that we establish to be effective and to be responsive to those needs. So to look specifically at, if you recall those focus groups, I just want to touch on for a moment some of the things we heard from them, some of the broad themes we got from the needs assessments, and then we'll get into what we're hearing now from the letter of interest. So if you recall from those focus groups, they came back to us with, number one, is workforce challenges. Those were both from the perspective of the employee and the employer. I would like to improve my situation, but I need training. I would like to hire people, but I can't find the qualified worker. I can't match the wages in other areas. One of the big impediments for folks reentering the workforce that we heard about was a lack of access to childcare services, and organizations were wanting to help, wanting help with finding the best ARPA funding that was out there. They expressed a need for grants or financial support, access to mental health. They applauded the COVID-19 testing and vaccination efforts of the county, and we had a group of municipalities that spoke to infrastructure needs and a request for the county to consider brading some funding along with them.
Excuse me, Brent.
Yes.
Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Brent, I don't know what your order of business is, but that childcare services bullet, I'd been reading your other Will O'Brien report, so it does look consistent with the number of responses for childcare applications, was 84. It was the highest category.
Yes.
But are you going to cover this sometime?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for letting me.
You're broadcasting about four slides ahead right now.
I'm a vision person.
That's right.
It's a vision.
As we looked at those external needs assessments, we pulled out results on a monthly basis and summarized those. We've received about 1,700 responses. Those, as you recall, come in anonymously. We collect a little bit of demographic information, is it an individual, a nonprofit, or a business, and where are they located? But we're basically asking them to identify their problems and tell us what they need. The trends that we're seeing there, number one is workforce. Again, the same things that we have been hearing in those focus groups. One of the things that we hear a lot in the needs assessment responses is that there's a lack, that still a number of folks that do not feel safe in crowded public spaces. So they're hesitant to re-enter some of those spaces. Broadband comes up a lot as people shift to online work, online learning, try to do e-commerce with their business. Access telehealth, broadband is a big concern. Healthcare access is one that we are hearing more and more about, and this is now trending toward folks with long-term health impacts from COVID, wanting to have continued access to healthcare. In the last couple of months, a new one has emerged, and there's a concern about inflation. It costs more to take care of the basics. So that's the backdrop that we've, that we've received from, from information that we've gathered through those two avenues. And now let's take a look at that letter of interest. As we specifically spelled out in the portal for people to submit these letters of interest, it's not an application. It's not a guarantee of funding. In fact, it's not a guarantee of county programs being established that might address the needs that people identified. That's been pretty clear all along. What it is, is a chance to gather further information, and now to begin to tie financial needs, a dollar amount to how to move forward with recovery and response to these problems, so that you'll have that information as this board looks to establish priorities for potential funding for community needs. Again, it's about effective response to the economic and health impacts of the pandemic. Just a bit about our process. This was open from December 21 of last year to January 23 of this year. And because the Treasury allows ARPA recipients to pass through their funding to sub-receipients that are defined as folks that would be conducting a program or a project on behalf of that direct recipient, in this case Sedgwick County, we can pass through those funds to them. It doesn't exclude them from being subject to the Treasury rules, their performance, and their reporting requirements. We received 233 responses. 232 of them came through the portal, and one came outside the portal, but it was a response to the letter of interest. The total of all those requests, as you can see, is 106,871,557. Quick math tells you that that exceeds our total direct allocation by 6.6 million dollars, and that, much of that money has already been allocated. So the message, I guess, on the beginning is that the needs that have been identified to date will, do exceed the resources that we've gotten from ARPA. As we looked through the responses and began to develop some way to, to group these, it is obvious that there were about six sectors that had some sort of unique characteristic, but they all, as you will hear, do have some things in common. So those six categories are business, childcare, education, healthcare, nonprofits, and government. Of the 233 responses, 13 were for capital projects. We'll talk a little bit about those as well, because we want to make a distinction between operational type of funding and capital expenditure types of funding programs that you might, that you might choose. I'm going to keep this at a high level, try to talk to summary results for sectors rather than individual results for companies or organizations that replied, but we do have that information as we engage further with you in terms of establishing priorities. First of all, with businesses, we got 58 responses for a total of about 17.4 million dollars in financial needs that were identified. These were small businesses of a few employees, all the way up to businesses that exceeded 500 employees, retail operations, professional service operations, manufacturers, people in real estate. There were just a number of, it touched about all industry segments across the community. Requests, as you can see, ranged from $5,000 to $4 million on an individual basis, with an average request of just under $300,000 to meet the needs that these businesses had identified. And I told you I was going to keep it at a high level. Let me speak first of the $4 million request, and then I'll talk about some themes that we saw from these responses. The $4 million request wasn't from a business itself. It was in this group because it supports business. It was from the Air Services Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, and it's a request to establish revenue guarantees to secure non-stop flights from Wichita to the east and west coast. The primary focus is east coast, but also secondarily west coast. That's been identified as an issue from, in terms of workforce attraction, talent attraction, and just general quality of life in the area. So that's what that $4 million request is about. Speaking individually or across the needs of the businesses themselves, the predominant thing that this sector needed help with was revenue, was related to their revenue losses that they've experienced in 2020 and 2021. They also talked about operational support for payroll, for just general overhead type of expenses. But in terms of making a pivot, in terms of recovery from the pandemic, this group talked about a need for moving into e-commerce to the extent that they could. So that brought up things like support, technological support to help them get over that hump, hardware, technical support for a web presence, as well as broadband access, because if you're in a rural area, it's tough to sell a product without broadband, to try to do that in an, in an online platform. So that was their, kind of their primary response to moving out of this. There were some things, some capital requests for expansion to try to take on some new opportunities and things of that nature. As Commissioner Meister said, childcare got a category of its own, because this was the area that we received the most number of responses. 84 childcare providers, from the smallest to some of the largest childcare providers in the county, responded with requests from $500 to $685,000, a total of about 5.4 million dollars. Again, it was operational support. This sector was hit very hard. They were closed down for much of the earlier part of the pandemic. They've had issues getting relicensed, getting reopened, having a stability of income, because folks that were bringing children to their facilities are now working from home some of the time. So their entire industry's been disrupted, and they just are needing kind of life support, was kind of the theme with their childcare providers. Revenue loss has been huge. The other thing is attracting employees, because the traditional wage rates here aren't competitive with other sectors, and people have moved into those other areas. So it's a tough problem, but we heard from individuals wanting to re-enter the workforce. They need quality childcare, and we're hearing from the childcare providers that it's tough to provide. So that seems to be a pretty significant need in terms of the numbers of responses that we got. Education and learning centers, we received 15 responses, and these were primarily private schools, different learning centers, tutoring programs, things of that nature. There was one request from one of the school districts in the county. All told, they were looking for about a million and a half dollars with requests from 500,000. All told, they were looking for about a million and a half dollars, with requests from 5,000 to about $350,000. We heard the same thing from this group. Trying to attract and retain workers because, so some payroll support, some ability to hire at competitive wages, just different types of operational support. They also, though, in terms of a pivot from current ways of doing business to moving forward in response to the pandemic, funds were also needed for new remote learning curriculum for students and for the purchase of additional computers, and then broadband access came up again. So they're trying to do things to provide remote learning, but need a little help in moving forward in that respect.
Just a moment, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that, the one USD letter that you received for whatever million? So you, did you, did we direct them to go, you have an explanation that the ARPA money funding was direct to school districts? Are they aware of that?
Yes, they did.
Were they made aware?
Right, they received their direct allocation aware of that. They were just looking for some additional support and making us aware of that.
Would that be eligible under what we're talking about here?
As we've examined these and spoken with Whit O'Brien, there wasn't anything that we saw in here that would be determined as an ineligible use of our ARPA allocation.
Okay, thank you.
Brent, a couple of questions while we're on this one. First of all, at the beginning, when Lindsey was giving her briefing, why she showed how much that the other governments and so forth got, but she didn't indicate on the school districts. Sometime, can you provide all the commissioners a breakdown by school district of what they received?
We can, yeah. The total for that was about $88 million across the county, but we can give you a breakdown by district.
Good. And the other question, you've talked about remote learning, and I understand the concern about making sure that our students can learn remotely, and a lot of that depends on whether or not we have broadband. But the second part of it is that the legislature limited remote learning to 40 hours, as I recall. And so we, I don't know what exactly they're asking for because they may be limited by the state law, so I want to make sure that we keep that in mind as we move forward.
Yes, sir. And one of the things, remember that there was only one school district in this group of 15. These were tutoring programs and other sorts of, some of the private schools and so forth that would try to make some sort of online offerings. So, but yes, those would also be subject to that as well.
Okay, thank you.
We got responses for healthcare for a total of almost $15 million. $25,000 was our smallest request, up to a $10.6 million capital request. Average request was about $400,000. We know the issues that have been in healthcare, employee burnout, compensation and things like that, and people dropping out and not having adequate staff to take care of folks that are, that are seeking healthcare. The, a couple of things about this, the $10.6 million request was pulled from this, from our average request. It's a big request from one of our regional medical centers. And so without that, they're at about a 14.8 million, under 14.3, $4.3 million request overall, so about an average of 400,000 per response. Again, it's operational support that they're looking for because of all those things that we've heard about and that we've mentioned. They do have an interest as a group of providing more telehealth options. That's a way to provide that service for a little less money, but the very same issues that everybody else has hit this group as well. Access to broadband, technology expertise, and technology hardware. Our nonprofit organizations across the county had combined responses of $35 million. Fifty-seven agencies responded with requests from 10,000 to $10 million. There were three capital requests in this group. They were talking about a capital project to increase housing for low-income clients, some opportunities to expand some of their facilities, facility for survivors of domestic violence. Those were the types of capital projects that we were seeing here. They're asking for the same types of categories, payroll, personnel support. One of the things that was unique to this, this group is that they couldn't raise funds for the last couple of years in the traditional manner, so they've had to shift focus. They don't have, haven't been able to have those in-person fundraisers and events, so it's been a shift to web-based fundraising. That's one of the things that, that is a transition that they're going through right now. It's been kind of tough, so they were looking for support in that area as well. The final sector that we will discuss are local government. We had seven responses from municipalities and other units of government with requests from 10,000 to 12 million. Most of these requests were for capital projects and for braided funding with, using county dollars, their local ARPA dollars to pursue water and sewer type of projects. There was one request for some operational support because it was a small community and had a number of people out with COVID, and they were looking for some assistance with that. There was one response in this group from a county advisory board. It's included in here, but we would probably pull it out in terms of this, this type of, it's in here because they've submitted, but it probably, it didn't quite meet the requirements that we had set forth. So just to recap, 223 responses with 13 capital projects for over $106 million across these six sectors. These two pie charts give us an indication in terms of the number of responses that we received by sector, as well as the dollar amounts that were requested or identified by sector. Couple of things of note, that orange sliver that we see on the pie chart on the left, that's our local government response in terms of numbers, but you can see about $30 million. They were a big chunk of the, of the requests. Childcare is the, about a third of the responses that you can see in the reddish-colored, but a much smaller number in terms of dollars. As we mentioned earlier, we broke this out between operational requests and capital projects, and you can see that about $68.5 million of the requests are for capital type, capital expenditures or capital projects, and $38 million for operational support. One of the reasons we broke this out is because if you established, if you wanted to deal with both, we're going to probably recommend two different grant programs, simply because we can quantify and handle the operations. If somebody needs money for technology, they can support that, and that's a shorter-term expenditure. The capital projects could last for a year or two years and require monitoring along the way. So we just wanted to bring, to break those out so that you would have a feel for the difference between the two. By sector, on this last chart shows us which sectors are asking for capital projects versus operations and so forth. So I guess to sum up, we're seeing a lot of requests for recruitment and retention of workforce payroll support. Everybody's talked about experiencing revenue loss, convince them of willingness to transition to online ways of doing business, a lot of infrastructure requests in terms of dollars, and the instability in childcare came through pretty loud and clear to us. So hopefully this will help you establish some priorities. We're willing to, and eager to have continued dialogue. I'll answer questions to my best to my ability and would suggest that you receive and file the report.
Thank you, Brent. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent and Lindsey, fantastic information and a lot to unpack, so thanks for all the work that you have done. I got two, one's a question and one's kind of a hypothetical. So a little bit of detail on the handout that you gave us, the description of the cities. That totals $24,695. Is it the top of page, well, you got it, page one, right?
Yes.
But then in this, local governments is more than that. What's the difference? Why was that, one of those numbers different?
The report that you received was just the municipalities, and they were five of the seven responses.
Okay.
There were two others that make up that difference.
Okay, okay. Then let's go to a hypothetical. So let's go to slide 55, let's say, just a couple back, just so I can, I just try to get my hands around understanding this better. So if, with our history of cares, we established buckets, and then we even adjusted the buckets as we worked through it. So let's say, I'm just trying to get a feel for what the committee does and Whit O'Brien advised. So let's say, under health, there's 11 applicants. Let's say they're all legitimate, but let's say that our bucket was only 10 million instead of the 14.9. If they, if all 11 qualified, do you, does the, intend of the committee to just take a, does this prorate that 10 million bucket to all 11 of them? That's a lot of hypothetical. I get it. I just want to, or you kick out a couple that don't, whatever. What is your?
Once, let's say we have that $10 million bucket for healthcare. Then we would open up a grant program.
Right.
We would identify the requirements for that grant.
Okay.
We might have a minimum and a maximum amount that would be awarded to any one entity. I would, I would assume that at the time that we would open that up, we'd probably have more than 11 responses because now there's real money to apply for.
Right.
Part of the rules that we would have to establish on the front end are, do we rank them, informally fund the ones that are, that meet it? This is number one, two, three, four, five, we're done. Number six gets part of the money that's left over? Or do we then go back and prorate to the extent that we might partially fund an initiative? Remember, these folks have programmatic outcomes and measures that they have to provide. So if they need 50,000, and we say we'll give them 30, are we going to reduce their measure, or is the program ineffective and now that 50 is back in the pool? So I'm answering your question with a lot of hypotheticals. We'd have to define those going in. So, yeah, it's, it's not going to be an easy process, but those things can spell out in the rules.
So did we, did we do that in the cares? Did we rank, did we rank them, or did we take the bucket and divide it up?
We didn't rank them. We did a risk assessment.
Okay.
Which determined the level of, I guess, compliance guidance that we would try to follow with them. Were they a riskier entity? Was the amount riskier? So we did that risk assessment on the front end. The second thing is that we, as I'm recalling, some of the different eligible items, anybody that was requesting PPE, that amount was funded. If they were requesting disinfectant, that was, and tell, technology for remote, those three items were pretty much automatics. Beyond that, it was looking at the program, how it tied to COVID response and things like that. But we didn't, we came back and asked for more funding to fund some of the initiatives that, that were presented.
Thank you. Just one more question popped up. Is, how in sync are we communicating with the state Spark? Are they calling it Spark at the state level still? Are we kind of lockstep with them, or are they going their way and we're going ours? Tough question maybe? You don't want to answer that yet?
Well, a couple of things have come out from Spark lately. There is, they have some advisory groups, or that may not be the correct term, but some advisory committees that are looking at different areas. And what we're trying to do is coordinate community-type requests for this money to go after things that are impactful to the whole community. So we're trying to get cooperation between the city, the county, Greater Wichita Partnership, Wichita State, all the entities that are, could compete, we want to go in together for those kinds of things.
So in reality, an applicant could say, I need a million dollars. County, I'd like, I'm going to apply for 600 from you and 400 from the state, so you could, as long as we're all communicating, they can consider whatever. So we don't want, any entity that asks us, I can say, go to the county website when we open up applications, and go to the state and just make sure you're not double-dipping, obviously.
Exactly. It's one of the things that they'll have to certify, that this is the only source of funds.
Thank you for letting me answer, ask those questions.
Very good. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Chairman. I do have a question. If we don't approve funding for whatever reason, but it is determined to be eligible, is that one the group that, are they just going to come in automatically to help them look at other buckets that are available through the federal funding, or do they have to start a new process then to get in touch with that group to get that help? Has that been worked out yet, how if we don't approve them, then we can help them still find other funding somewhere else?
Well, that's one of the, of the charges or part of the scope with the community navigators is to help point people to the right source of ARPA funding. So if, if we stood up a program, maybe the only program we stand up is for healthcare, then it's going to be incumbent upon the navigators to help those folks looking for childcare resources to plug into those kind of resources.
But will they automatically get in touch with those groups? I just want to make sure that if anybody does not get approved, then they know the process, I guess, and how to get started with the navigators, or will the navigators get in touch with them if they put in funding requests from us and we don't approve them?
I don't think we've defined that. We could take it either, either direction.
Thank you.
Well, I don't see any other questions today, but I want to thank Lindsey and Brent for the discussion. I know that your staff spent an awful lot of time involved in this, so you're not the only two that I want to thank. I want to make sure I thank the entire staff, but we've got a lot of big decisions to make here in the near future. I guess you're going to go around one-on-one with each of the commissioners and kind of see what our feelings are on each of these different things, so that we can come back and make a decision in the future on how that we're going to start allocating about 50 million, what I understand we still have left that we're going to have to make decisions on. So stay tuned, there's going to be a lot of changes yet. But thank you.
Thank you.
And I make a motion that we receive and file.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? See none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on January 27, 2022.
Joe, you've been very patient.
Yes, I mean, it's been, been enjoyable and enlightening. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, your purchasing director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 27 results in three items that we'd like your approval for. The first item is the Cronos Workforce Maintenance and Support Division of Information and Technology, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Cronos Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $112,719.55. Item number two is the Green Climber Remote Control Mower for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Key Equipment and Supply based on the Sourcewell Contract 070821-GCL, and that's in the amount of $69,572.50. Our final item is the Temp Services for Traveling Nurses for various departments, and this recommendation is to accept the proposals from Cross Country Staffing Incorporated, which is doing business as cross-country health. Incorporated, which is doing business as Cross Country Healthcare Services, Management Recruiters of Fort Worth, SWLP, and Staff Today Incorporated. And that's for the rates listed in the table. Also additional information found in the proposal responses. And this is for a contract period of one year with three one-year options to renew. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have and recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on this, on this $70,000 mower, I understand this was apparently in the, by reading the backup material, it sounds like it was in the, it was planned spending in the 22, in the 22 budget. But have we, have we had a mower like this in the past? Is this a replacement or is this something new?
I think so. Is Jim on there?
Yeah, Commissioners, let me see, see if Mr. Weber is, he's on quarantine today. So.
Jim, are you on the call?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead and speak up, please.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Jim, Fisher Howell is asking about the acquisition of the mower. If that was part of the 2022 budget discussion, it seems like we've seen this before. Can you just kind of go over that purchase again?
Sure. So we did request that in the 2022 budget process. We dropped it out at the end, but then we put it back, made a year-end request for a transfer to buy the machine. And that transfer's been made and the money's available to purchase the equipment.
Have Commissioners seen this request before? I mean, you said it was approved at the end of the year. Do we, do the Commissioners make this transfer request? We approve the transfer request?
Jim, Lindsey's going to.
Okay, good.
So Commissioner, yes, we, or I'm sorry, Lindsey Prost, CFO. Yes, this was a part of a year-end interfund transfer that came to the commission in mid-January. I can't remember the exact date.
A few weeks ago?
Yes.
Okay. Is this, is this a new, new capability for Sedgwick County? We haven't had this type of mower in the past?
Correct. But I'll let Jim speak to that with more.
Have we just not mowed this type of area or is this something we did in a different, different way? Please explain. Is this a, why do we need a $70,000 lawnmower?
Mr. Weber, are you hearing that?
Yep, I got it. So this is a new piece of equipment for us. It's a piece of compact equipment. It's got quite a bit of versatility, can do a number of things. But we do have places that we don't have equipment that can, that are on steep slopes, behind guardrails, down in the bottoms, creeks, around bridges, that we just cannot get to very well or at all. And so this piece of equipment addressed that. This one also has the capability, and we're getting a bucket, and this is a piece of equipment, a little over three feet tall. So it has the capability of going into some of our shallower box culverts. If we had to plug that box culvert, we can go in like, like you might take a Bobcat home, you can't take a Bobcat in. So this thing would be able to go into four-foot-tall concrete box culvert, and we can use it to clean out the culvert, those kinds of things. This would be the only one of these that we have. But we think it definitely enhances safety for operators and lets us get to some places. You know, we want to take trees and vegetation out before it gets big and gets expensive to take out. And so this is the kind of piece of equipment that'll let us do that.
Okay. So, but, but currently, right now, we do not mow areas like this would, this would get to areas in the future that we currently do not mow. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. But I'm also saying there are places that we, we tackle some other way that this will be a much safer way and more effective or efficient way to do it.
And in terms of cleaning out culverts, do we, we use like a water blast technology or some other way of doing that today?
It's hard to do. We have a contractor with a sewer cleaning company that can do them up to a certain size. Or if it gets too big, it gets just really awkward to, to water jet them basically and, and back them out. This will let us handle within a dry, dry mode and just in bulk, a lot easier.
I want to, I want to support Public Works and get you guys what you think you need. I just am a little surprised by this one. This one caught me off guard a little bit. And my, my next set of questions is about the traveling nurse program. I guess I'm a little concerned about the entire traveling nurse program nationwide. It's been an ongoing discussion I've had with numerous people. But I assume that we are having trouble getting the staff we need. So we're going to essentially get into the traveling nurse program and use American Rescue Plan funds to make this happen? Is that the plan here?
I believe so. Is Brad on the, should we swing from how, the mower? Oh, Tim.
Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. Yes, Commissioner, that is our practice and intent. We have used cares funding earlier to help us staff nursing positions that we haven't been able to fill through other means. And so this contract allows us to use ARPA funds as well.
So this will be, so in terms of how many people we hire, how much time we use them for, it's all based on a contract? It's not, we have no long-term obligations to these folks that are coming in to assist?
That's correct.
And it's all paid for out of ARPA funds?
Yes.
Just, I'll make, I'll make a comment. And I, it doesn't mean I won't support this. But the traveling nurse program is, is designed essentially to, you know, to deal, to assist with regional crisis, if you will. If you have an earthquake or a tornado or some other calamity, the traveling nurse program does a great job in moving people from one part of the country to where that need is being felt. But when you have a pandemic, what we're seeing right now is traveling nurse program is not dealing with a regional problem. It's dealing with a worldwide problem. And it's frustrating to me. I mean, I feel like we have to do this, obviously. But it's frustrating to me that traveling nurse program essentially is almost creating the problem. It's, it's, it's a solution that's actually creating its own problem. So it's a frustrating thing. And when we're using taxpayer money, ARPA funds, to subsidize, if you will, a, a solution that actually is creating its own problem. I just think this, this country needs to have a discussion about the appropriateness of using taxpayer money to, to subsidize and support a traveling nurse program. It's, it's misguided. Anyway, it's a frustration. Thank you for letting me speak to that. I, that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Mr. Weber, I hope you're feeling better. Also, I do recall us discussing this mower some time back. So with that, I see no other questions. I move that we approve the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Okay.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items H through R. And I want to bring your attention to item L, which is the resolution amending the composition of the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee. This resolution will be followed up in a couple of weeks on our February 23 meeting with an appointment from Derby after their meeting. So this is phase one of a two-phase process. So.
Thanks for that clarification. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate item L. I think that's a, that's showing respect to another first-class city that I think needs to be done. I have a question on item K and item N. I don't know if you want to deal with those separately or can just ask a couple of quick questions and we will move on with the consent agenda, Chairman.
Kilo in November, is that correct?
Yeah, I just have two really short questions, I think.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we approve H Hotel through Romeo with the exception of Kilo in November. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Madam Clerk, please call item K.
Item K, Resolution Providing Signature Authority for the Purchase of Certain Real Property by Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Commissioner Howell?
Yeah. So Chairman, I just wanted to understand what the purpose of this is. Is this a, is this an existing authority that's already out there or is this establishing something new? And if, if it is new, what's the purpose of it? What it says is we're, we're establishing signature authority for real estate purposes for certain people, including our facilities manager and a few others in the management structure. I, I guess, I want to think, I want to make sure that whatever they're approving or whatever they're signing off on, that first of all, the BOCC has, has been briefed and we agree, whether that's through consensus or however we do that. But I just want to make sure that we're not hanging over some type of authority. I don't know what's going on.
Let's handle this in two phases. Let's let Tanya talk to what this particular project is, then Mike can deal with the legality of what you're talking about there. Sure. Let's do it that way.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. What item you're referring to is the, the ability to be able to sign closing documents for the 26, I have the address memorized on me, but this is for the Sedgwick County Health Department that I briefed you on about a month ago for the purchase of that property. And so this is the ability for the, those listed on there to be able to sign the closing documents for that.
Currently, as written, it doesn't, it doesn't limit the scope of this to that project only. That's kind of where I'm concerned.
Okay.
This looks like it's very broad. It could do almost anything under Sedgwick County.
Commissioner Howell, the resolution states that this is exercising powers for the purchase of property at 2716 West Central.
Okay.
It's only, it's only for that property. We, you know, once we sign the real estate contract, the next, the next step, of course, at closing is to have somebody representing the county at that. We just thought rather than having the chairman of the county commissioner or something, it'd be easier just to have staff go to the closing and disauthorize that.
Okay. That answers that question. Thank you very much. And Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Will you approve item K?
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Madam Clerk, call item November.
Item N, Establish 2022 Budget Authority and Asset Forfeiture Fund.
Commissioner Howell?
Chairman, so again, every time we see this type of resolution, it causes me to, to, I guess, to question, first, I guess my first question is this, this $223,000, is this, is this monies that were, that were piled up, so to speak, from the 2021 fiscal year? That we're simply getting budget authority for the 22 year to spend those dollars?
Hi, Jeanette Alaro, on behalf of the District Attorney's Office. I heard your question and the answer is yes. That is, this fund rolls from year to year. If it's not expended, it rolls forward, including any investment income. The statute is set up in a manner that gives hesitation to allowing us to set the budget up at the time of the budget authority. I think the term is something along the lines of you cannot anticipate funding within the asset forfeiture fund when establishing budget authority. So therefore, we don't do it at that, in that cycle.
That makes sense to me. But in terms of the asset forfeiture fund, is there a report for the 2021 calendar year?
There is. I, I hand-delivered a report to you folks maybe a week ago.
Okay.
Letters that showed all the income and all the expenditures. There should have also been attachments to this item that would have reflected that. There was very little of expenditures. It's used almost primarily for training and there was very little training last year.
Okay. So it shows where the money come, came from and where the money's planned to be spent.
Well, it doesn't show where the money came from. It shows you how much money came in. So the, where the money came from, that would have to be a more detailed report that could be provided.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see that report.
Okay.
In terms of the KSA, the laws that govern the, the asset forfeiture, does it designate, does it, does it clarify in the Kansas law that this money is earmarked specifically for this agency to, to utilize for these types of expenditures? Or do we have some discretion on how that money comes into the county and essentially, do we have any, any discretion whatsoever on, on where this money ends up?
It, the money is split between the law enforcement agency and the prosecutors. So there is a split there. The law enforcement agency usually gets 82, 85 percent. Prosecutor's 15 to 20 for their, for their legal work in, in that regard. The law is very clear in the prosecution piece of it, the receipt of it. I don't know about the law enforcement, so I can't speak to that. But it, it is a little bit generalized to be used for training, education, law enforcement purposes, as some kind of phrase as the prosecutor deems appropriate or something along those lines.
Well, I guess my concern is, and this is probably a legislative concern, I suppose, but I, I, I'd like to separate the incentives from, from the, the issue of policing and law enforcement and adjudication. When things end up in our, in our custody, obviously they have to be processed and, and something has to happen to those, to those things. I don't know that, I, I don't know that I like the fact that there seems to be almost a, and I'm not, I'm not trying to accuse anybody, but there almost seems to be a benefit or incentive essentially to go after certain types of cases because there may be some type of financial, you know, result that comes back into the agency in some way. I would say, and just like the, just like I've said, I've said this before, whatever Mark Bennett needs, I want to support that. I will support that through the budget. Whatever Jeff Easter needs, I want to support that through the budget. I have no problem with appropriating the appropriate, the necessary funds for their agencies to do their job completely in any way they feel like they need to do that. Having said that, there's monies here that we could have appropriated, but we didn't because this money is coming in to essentially offset what we could have appropriated. So if there was a way to, to, receive funds into the county and then reappropriate those funds back out again, I think it kind of separates the, the direct incentive, which is already, basically, it's in Kansas law. It's there. And I, I just have a problem with it personally.
I think your concerns are probably valid. There is a, a rather extensive screening process for our office anyway on, we have an investigator that's got an extensive background in that area that reviews any case that's presented from law enforcement. Before he will allow it to be presented, so to speak, to our office, then it goes to a couple of lawyers that work in that area and have an expertise and they review. And then I do know there are some standards that are set in general. But your concern is, is legitimate and, and valid. As for the appropriation, I, I don't have the statute in front of me, but I think it's very clear that it goes into the trust fund, prosecutor trust fund, which is the asset forfeiture fund, and how it is used and the percentages are all statutorily set out.
I mean, one solution might be, again, the state of Kansas itself could potentially become, if you will, the receptor of, of these funds. Let them, you know, do it through the, through the state appropriations process and find ways to, to spend this money. I just don't, don't know that the, the agency that is hands-on with whatever that case is ought to have such a, such a, a short connection to receiving those funds. I wish it went through some other bigger process. And so I'm not saying Sedgwick County's the right answer, but I don't know that I like the way it handle, is being handled currently.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would imagine there may be some states that potentially that the, these, these funds end up at the state level and they, they appropriate them, you know, in some, some fashion, form, form or fashion of those count in those various states. We do it the way we do it here, and I don't know that I completely agree or like the way it's, the way it's been handled. But we have to, we have to approve this. I get it. And so.
So the seizing agency, law enforcement agency does have some discretion on which law prosecutor office they might take that to. So there is, there are some that do go to the federal side and, and they are handled through the federal government. And so that money, as well as I think there's something with the revenue service as well. So.
Okay. Well, I'll probably continue thinking on this and maybe you possibly.
Well, I just want to give you a heads up. There's one more coming too.
Sure.
That didn't make this agenda item. It's the federal asset forfeiture fund that we have. It's much smaller, but it as well is coming through. It's a shared seizure that we were involved in with the federal government and they have a sharing program when that occurs.
If you don't mind, I'd like to request the, the report that would show where the money came from. I would like to see that if that's okay.
Certainly.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item N.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. And I'd just like to comment real quick before we vote on it. What I understand is that the amount that is going into this fund each year is getting smaller and smaller and smaller. Is that not true?
It, it's a little difficult to predict. It can vary, jump up and down. The COVID and the courts, everything was shut down with asset forfeitures and the civil side of it. So there were really no hearings and really no movement. Anything that had been filed was kind of suspended. A lot of the filings went way down. I think law enforcement was focused on other, other matters. But it, it's hard to predict. That's a pretty hefty amount that we've carried forward, I think primarily because expenditures have been lower in the last few years.
But from law enforcement, what I've heard is it's gone down because the bad guys are finding very unique ways of moving the different assets around so that they're not available for forfeiture.
I heard just recently they're using Uber. So.
Very good. Well, we have a motion in the second. I don't see any further discussion. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Tanya, what do you have?
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. Yesterday, I sent you all a report from Watkins Public Strategies, and it appears that they are monitoring about 75 bills currently in the legislature that appears to be relevant. that appears to be relevant to Cedric County. And then also, as bills are being introduced, we're trying to notify you as those come through. So, yesterday, I sent an email regarding Senate Bill 404, which is a gaming bill that authorizes a vote to permit electronic gaming machines at a racetrack gaming facility in Cedric County. When I talked to Jason yesterday, he said this is the same bill that has been introduced in the legislature for the past three years, so, starting in the 2020 session. He said the only difference is, in there is language authorizing para mutual licensees to operate historical horse race machines. We thought that there was going to be a hearing today, but it turns out that the legislature is closed today and likely the rest of this week. So, he thinks that the first hearing will be around February 16th. But we will monitor this and keep you aware. Want to keep you updated on the economic development legislation bill. This is Senate Bill 347, otherwise known as the Apex Bill. A lot of time is being spent on this. This is legislation in hopes of securing a major economic development bill with a promise of 4,000 jobs, 6,000 construction jobs, and $4 billion in capital investment in a 3 million-square-foot advanced manufacturing facility. Brent sent you an email on this last week and mentioned that this is good for the county and our economic development efforts. So, we, of course, keep you aware of that and monitor that bill as well. As you know, on our legislative platform, our priorities are mental health and corrections. And so, the legislature is going to start next week and the week after with many subcommittee meetings, and that will be requests for funding. And after they hear those requests for fundings, they will take, excuse me, they will take those recommendations for funding to the Ways and Means Committee and the Appropriations Committee after that. And so, we will start to work with our lobbyists to make sure that we have input in these hearings on fundings, and especially on our priorities for mental health and corrections. Commissioner Howell can probably speak better on this than I can. We are monitoring House Bill 2200, which appears to be the former Senate Bill 367 with improvements. Conversations are starting in that, and Commissioner Howell last week testified on that. So, we will continue to monitor that. Senate Bill 53, Charter Commission, we are still monitoring that bill, but don't have much to report on that. So, other than that, just again, want to mention that the legislature is closed today and likely for the rest of this week. So, happy to answer any questions. And if you have anything that you would like me to do or monitor, please let me know.
Super. Well, thank you for the update. I appreciate it, and I don't see any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, please add to the bills that we're monitoring, House Bill 2565. That is a bill that deals with election results reporting. I mentioned this yesterday in the staff meeting. Talked with our election commissioner. Right now, we don't, we don't have a solution locally that seems to, seems to check the boxes that we needed to check. So, I think that bill, I think that bill's going to see some, some light. I did listen to the Senate, the Senate hearing yesterday, Senate Fed and State on election security was fascinating. But the commission, sorry, the chairman of that committee, Senator Rubelston, indicated there would be many, many election bills this year. I know there's a lot of things that are happening. So, I would expect we'll see that, that bill either move forward independently, or we might see the contents of that actually amended on to any of the other bills. House Bill 2200, again, I think that has a lot of momentum. There was, it was a very good hearing. There was, I think that, as I listened to the conference testify, it was a very, very compelling hearing. If you haven't, if you haven't listened to the whole thing, I would encourage you to please listen to the first part of that, where they actually did a review of Senate Bill 367. And the first half, the 90 minutes, was basically a review of 367. It was, and it was eye-opening. It was eye-popping. And then I'd just like to say, I did receive a note from Lindsey Poirier this morning on some finance legislation that we need. I would like to get that into bill form as quickly as I can and get that back to the commission for support. I'd like to make that a priority. It is on our, it is on our platform. It's just not currently in bill form. So, we need to get that moved forward. I plan on working on that this week. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. One thing, if you have a chance to talk to our election commissioner, you might find out where we're at on Vote Anywhere bill that was passed some years back, that they promised us that in 2022, we'd be able to implement it. So, I would hope that 2022 is here, that we have something that can happen.
Chairman, if I can interrupt, Lindsey just whispered in my ear that she's going to be here at Tuesday staff to talk about that.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Does anyone have anything for committee reports today? Well, I do. How many of you have had an opportunity to see the new Spurge magazine? And see our Commissioner?
That's not a committee, that's not a committee report.
But more importantly, please get a copy of it or take a look at it because you've got to see the inside. That is even more significant. Because we've known Commissioner Meitzner for some time, but he has a full head of hair in this one, so he's looking awesome. It's my chance to embarrass him, and I took that opportunity. Thank you very much.
And I think President Trump copied my hairstyle there. Yeah, thank you.
And Lindsey, I'd like you to autograph this. Commissioner Meitzner, do you have something?
Yeah, are we under, are we under other now, kind of? We're under other?
We're on other.
Yeah, okay. Couple of things. Two things. We've been advised that today, you know, this afternoon, and I think if communication can maybe get this out there a little bit, there's a, you know, the governor announced this base program, and it's about $100 million from Spark to the governor. And the applications are being, there's going to be a seminar this afternoon. Fortunately, they're going to record it and play it again, eligible to review. But it's basically 50%, I don't know. There's a matching program in there, too. You have to match, which we've not talked about a match in our Spark stuff. But anyway, it covers a lot of stuff. I think, hopefully, you all had the same email. But just a note to the public that, boy, it could be a lot of, a lot of items you could apply for under this. So, that's one thing. Then the second of two things is, last week, I was able to be a part of of a new company that's moved here called Nova Coast. They've taken the top two floors at Epic Center. It's an incredibly cybersecurity company. They had a goal of hiring a few people right off the bat. They've already well exceeded that. They want to take more space. It's really got an attraction with young people that have an interest in this cybersecurity. It's very impressive, and if any of the commissioners would like to go through it, I could probably help arrange. It's a tightly secure world. They're working closely with McConnell and universities on security. But one thing of interest was that they took us around about, they have about 10 divisions. And I was joined by, Senator Moran was there, too, and a representative from the Kansas Commerce. But each station got to say what they did. And these managers are from all over the country, and some have already moved and located here. But a common theme was how happy they were with being here in Wichita and the friendliness of Wichita, which we all know. And, and then the cost of living, because they're coming from all over the country. And they actually were saying, there's so much to do here. I mean, it's really refreshing to hear. So, at the very end of the tour, there was a little bit of Q and A and comments. And Senator Moran asked the CEO, what, okay, so we're all, everybody's happy, and everybody's happy, and we're all doing great, and thank you, and all that stuff. Is there anything that, that we could do better to help you continue to grow in this new area here, in this relocation? And ironically, they said, well, if we had better air service, because we've got all of our customers coming from all over the country, and it's hard, it's just hard to get in and out of Wichita. So, ironically, when you, when you said, when you said there's this one-off request for some, supporting some expansion of direct flights from east and west, it just sunk in there. When you said that, I thought, oh, that's exactly what Nova Coast said. So, anyway, no secret. That's my two things to report. Thank you for letting me state that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have anything for other? I don't see anyone. Today, we have no executive session. Does anything else need to come before the board, before we adjourn? Nothing seen. For that, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Well, Brent, you hung out the whole time, didn't you?
He's my right. I'm not grabbing my stuff, so.
I'm so sorry for you.